Okay, you're all set to begin.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate it. Welcome, everybody, to the Town Council meeting. It's included a joint meeting with the School Committee. This is October 20th, 2022, and I have 7:04 on my clock. So just want to welcome everybody and Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the roll call, please. This is obviously just for the Town Council at this point.
Councillors, Actless.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
E.
Colum. Cusack.
Present.
Rap Kersetti.
President.
Levesque.
Here.
Ludke.
Here.
Vendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Dar.
Here.
Don Hilber.
Here.
We have 12. Thank you.
Thank you to Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy. And now, at this point, if we can all mute our microphones, please rise, other than Counselor Cusack, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Cusack.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And at this point in time, it is time for a moment of silence and just want to continue to keep in our thoughts and prayers the nation of Ukraine and all that's going on there and, you know, truly, I think our desire is that there would be peace on earth and and even though it might be a naive thought for some, it is a dream for most. So with that, like to observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, it is time for public comment. Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment, please?
We do. It'll just be one moment.
Thank you.
For public comment, we have Dr. Laurel Shader. Dr. Shader, you can unmute and you have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Laurel Shader. I'm a senior scientist at Silent Spring Institute and I lead the Massachusetts PFAS near health study. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present during the Town Council meeting two weeks ago. We appreciate all the suggestions during that meeting and all that the town has done to support our study. After further consultation with Cheryl Osimo, the Executive Director of Massachusetts Breast Cancer Coalition, who's our core community partner for this study, along with other MBCC supporters, I wanted to provide some additional information about our team's extensive outreach efforts and reiterate some of the barriers and challenges that we have encountered. We are grateful to the Barnstable Public Schools for sharing information about our study on social media, on the BPS website, and by disseminating printed flyers. However, in order to fully engage with parents and guardians, we do think it is essential for us to be able to recruit in person at school events, as we are being allowed to do in the Town of Eyre, which is the other community in our study. As a parent of school-aged children myself, I know that parents have a lot on their minds. So having an opportunity to talk with them one-on-one about the study is a really important way for them to learn and ask questions in order to make an informed decision about whether to participate. As a reminder, we've only enrolled 27% of the adults and 12% of the children that we had planned to enroll in Hyannis. We have reached out to many houses of worship in and around Barnstable. We are grateful to have had information about our study, included in newsletters from the Cape Cod Council of Churches and to have had an informational table at the IPR Church's car wash this summer. However, we've not had success in being invited to have in-person opportunities to share information about the study or sign up interested residents. We've also been told that the Barnstable Adult Community Center cannot accommodate our request to share information with people attending their programs. And the Hyannis Library does not have staff to partner with our team on developing a program at this time. Despite the challenges, we are in the process of planning additional events and outreach strategies. We are planning to start door-to-door canvassing and invite Town Councillors to help us with that. We've tentatively scheduled an event to be held at Barnstable Town Hall on Wednesday, November 16th, from 12 to 2, to share an update with the community, invite residents to meet our team, and if they're interested, to have some time to sign up. I'd like to reiterate that the Town of Barnstable has an important opportunity and responsibility to contribute to this groundbreaking nationwide CDC study to better understand how PFAS chemicals can affect our health. We greatly appreciate all that the Town of Barnstable has done to support our study. We ask that the Town, especially the school system, to support the study to the extent possible, especially by allowing our team to recruit in person at school events and other town-sponsored venues. Thank you for this opportunity tonight to provide additional information, and I look forward to following up with each of you.
Thank you, Dr. Shader. Appreciate being here.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Sarah, for public comment?
People have just started logging on, so Sarah will be right back.
Great, thank you.
There's no other public comment at this time.
Hey, thank you very much. At this point in time, it is time for response to public comment. Anybody would like to respond to Dr. Shader? Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque, and thank you, Dr. Shader, for this update. Can you please tell me again, so I can write it down, your planned open house or this workshop at Town Hall? Please?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for the follow-up question. So we've just been in touch with Lynn Point and we appreciate the opportunity to have an event at Barnstable Town Hall on Wednesday, November 16th, from noon to 2 o'clock. Still working out the details of the agenda, but we're planning to have a presentation to provide an update to the community about how the study is going, to give residents an opportunity to answer questions. And we'd like to give participants, potential participants, the opportunity to meet with one of our study team members and actually sign up for the study if they have the time and inclination.
I'm glad to hear that, but it strikes me, to be honest with you, although I'm not a parent, but the middle of the day on a Wednesday is probably not the best time to interface with working families. So I don't know if there's a Saturday event that can be planned in the future, a similar one. I'll see if I can come up with some ideas to help you. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and we're working closely with our community partners with Cheryl Osimo and our other community partners from Massachusetts Breast Cancer Coalition on identifying other opportunities as well. As a working parent myself, your point is well taken, and that's certainly not the only way that we plan to reach out to the community. Like I said, we have been talking with the library as well, and we are planning some other events in the future, so.
And if you have a little JPEG announcement for this opportunity, I'll include it in my next newsletter.
Okay. Appreciate that opportunity to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Oh, Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Dr. Shader, I just wanted to thank you again for speaking out about what really is a unique opportunity to be part of a study that could, you know, change policy and law around what is allowable in our drinking water. And I know you're aware that Counselor Ludke and I are two of your participants. Again, I would just keep encouraging anyone who is a resident of Hyannis between May of '06 and July of 2016, correct?
That's correct.
To please get in touch with the PFAS and U Mass Health Study. And I also wanted to say I'm the liaison to the Council of Aging. So I'll see what I can do, or if I can, you know, get you a little further at the Barnstable Adult Community Center, because I think that would be a good resource for your study. Thank you again for coming and talking to us.
Thank you for participating, Counselor Shaughnessy, and for your efforts to connect us with the Barnstable Adults Center as well. Thank you.
It was virtually painless.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment, too, that I went to the Open Streets on Sunday, and I know that they had a nice booth down there by the Bugs Toy Store, which was a great location to pick up kids and families. And I spoke to the representative there, and I am going to do some door-to-door with them, because I do think that that's an absolutely critical means to achieve the goal here. I've talked to so many people, and when I even mention it, their first thing is, what's PFAS? They have absolutely no idea. I mean, I know that sounds incredible after all of the outreach that's been done, but until you actually talk to people and take the time to explain, you know, I think face-to-face, I don't think we're going to get the results that we need. And I think it is our obligation to support this study to the fullest extent. So thank you so much, Dr. Shader, for your continuing information to the Council here. And I'll be working, I met Betty Ann there, and I think we're going to work together to start trying to do some door-to-door.
Thank you for that, Counselor Ludke. I'm glad you had a chance to meet Betty Ann Beavis from Massachusetts Breast Cancer Coalition. She's been one of our fabulous recruiters out in the field, meeting people in front of grocery stores, at Hyannis Open Streets, and many other events. And we will definitely look forward to going door-to-door with you to reach more families in the community. So thank you for that.
Counselor Schnapp, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Laurel, for coming back and giving us an update. I didn't think of this the last time we met, but if you haven't done any specific outreach to the Housing Authority, you have several developments that are in Hyannis that would probably have lots of residents who would have, you know, fit that timeline. So if you need any introduction, let me know, but Lori Fenton is the Executive Director, and I think that perhaps they would be willing to, you know, again, share information in their newsletters or let you set up, you know, in their community rooms at some future time, so.
Okay, thank you for that recommendation, Counselor Schnapp. I'll check with Cheryl to see if we've made any outreach there yet, and if not, I would definitely take you up on that offer to make an introduction. Thank you.
Counselor Attles, please. You have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President, just following protocol. Dr. Schrader, you may have said this already, and I'll apologize in advance, but only, I just thought of this. Have you done any radio, any interviews on the radio with our local stations?
Well, Cheryl and I have been on the radio many times. I actually did two radio interviews just over the course of this week. So, and we've, we have had a lot of radio stations interested in covering the study. So we're grateful for that, and Cheryl has been on the radio as well, so.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you.
We do have a 30-second PSA recorded and the text for it. So if there are other opportunities to share that, we'd welcome that as well. And I'll add that I was interviewed yesterday for Channel 18 Town Talk with Paula Hershey. So grateful for that opportunity as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other response to public comment? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you again, Dr. Shader, for being with us. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you. And moving along, I would like to welcome the members of the Barnstable School Committee with us. And again, thank you for being with us, making sure that everybody is here. Did we, maybe I'm missing it. Do we have Andre with us?
Yep. Yeah, I have Andre, Peter, and Kathy. Joe can't make it tonight.
Oh, there's Andre. Excellent. Come on, Hollywood Squares here. Thank you. Just making sure that everyone's here. So at this point in time, I'd like to call the order, the joint meeting of the Town Council and the School Committee to review the financial condition of the Town Review and expenditure forecasts and other relevant information in order to develop a coordinated budget as outlined in our charter. So again, I would like to welcome everybody and I'd like to welcome Superintendent of Schools Sarah Hearn and also Assistant Finance Director Gareth Markwell, of course, our Finance Director Mark Milne, and Attorney Moynihan for being with us as well. And, but I will let Chair of the School Committee, Mike Judge, introduce the members of the School Committee, please. And go meeting to order, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. So first of all, I'm going to apologize. I'm in the middle of a cold that's moving into my chest, so I'm on all kinds of antibiotics and stuff. So if I start with a coughing spell, I apologize now. I'll try to get through it as quick as I can. I'm going to sound like an auctioneer to try to get through it as quick as possible. So I'm going to call the School Committee portion of the joint meeting with the Town Council order. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Andre?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Chair is here. So four people are here. Having said that, I will now turn the meeting back over to President Levesque.
Excellent. Thanks for being with us. You were fighting it through. So what's great is, you know, at least if it gets too bad, you can always just mute yourself, so. It's being in a remote land. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Finance Director Mark Milne and Assistant Finance Director Gareth Markwell for the presentation, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Good to see you all this evening. Good evening, Councillors, School Committee members. Mark Milne, Director of Finance, Town of Barnstable. Can you see my screen okay, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening all. Again, joining me this evening are Superintendent Hearn and Deputy Finance Director Gareth Markwell, who are joining me this evening to present this, make this presentation to the joint meeting. As President Levesque mentioned, this is required by our charter. We are here tonight to review the financial condition of the Town, our expenditure and revenue forecasts, any other relevant information in order to develop that annual policy agreement, which is subject to the review of both the School Committee and the Town Council, and we will review that with you this evening. So beginning with the review of the financial condition of the Town, we're going to look at our most recent credit rating, which was conducted by Standard and Poor's back in March of 2022. Then we'll get into our last financial audit report from June 30th of 2021. We'll look at the budget results from the fiscal year and closing, June 30th, 2022, that just ended. And we'll take a look at the fund balance reserves that we have as of July 1st, 2001, which were just certified last week by the Department of Revenue. Beginning with a review of that credit rating, we continued with a AAA bond rating with a stable outlook. Standard and Poor cited for backup that AAA rating was very strong management and strong budget flexibility, as well as liquidity. They also considered our reserves strong, our budgetary performance strong, and we have a strong overall debt and contingent liability profile. We operate within a strong institutional framework. And they did, however, note that they consider our environmental risk above average, and that's understandable since we are a coastal community. And so they're going to be watching coastal communities a little closer in the future to see how we address those environmental challenges. Part of that strong institutional framework is, they look at our largest 10 taxpayers and they make up less than 4% of the property value in Town, which is a good property tax framework from a property tax standpoint, because we're not dependent upon any one or two single taxpayers to pay a significant portion of our tax levy. You can see most of the top 10 taxpayers here are shopping centers and utilities. And this hasn't changed much over the year. We are predominantly concentrated in residential property. And again, that's subject to, the only risk we have really is, we're subject to what happens with an environmental disaster, or a natural disaster, like a hurricane. So that's the one thing we worry about from a credit standpoint is the property value we could lose from a natural disaster. But overall, we have a strong institutional framework. This is the analytical framework they use to come up with that bond rating. It's heavily weighted towards the economy, management, and financial measures. The economy they look at, not only, I know we're really just a tourist economy, but they look at more than that. They also look at the fact that we're the regional transportation hub, commercial center for Cape and the Islands, and they also consider the second homeowners and the wealth associated with second homeowners and what that brings as far as effective buying power in the area. So they consider our economy to be strong. We're moving into the financial audit as of June 30th, 2021. We received an unqualified opinion, which basically means that the financial statements are fairly and appropriately presented, without any identified exceptions. And there were no findings or question costs on any of the federal programs that we were awarded. Some of the highlights in that audit were that our assets exceed our liabilities by $296 million, which is a $46 million increase over the previous year. We saw a $90 million decrease in our pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, which was very good for us. The fact that we started funding a trust fund to address our other post-employment benefit liability resulted in the actuaries increasing the discount rate that they used to calculate our liability, which resulted in a significant reduction in that liability, because we have been consistently funding that trust fund for several years now. Our long-term debt did increase by $12 million as we became more aggressive in our capital funding. And our general fund balance was equal 32% of our general fund expenditures, which was a 3% increase over the previous year. Moving into looking at some of the budgetary results for fiscal year '22, our general fund revenue, actual general fund revenues exceeded our budget estimates by nearly $5.3 million, which is about 3% above what we estimated, except the budget. Many categories performed very well, especially motor vehicle excise tax. We collected $2 million more than what we used to prepare the budget for fiscal year 2022. And I'll have a little bit more information about that in a couple of slides coming up. On the expenditure side, we turned back nearly $2 million of unexpended appropriations. It's about 1.2% of the operating budget. You'll notice that Public Works turned back nearly $800,000. A lot of that was due to vacancy savings. There was a great deal of employee turnover in Public Works last year. However, we also provided them additional funding of $600,000 for the January 2022 storm cleanup. They didn't spend, they spent less than half of that, so about $310,000 was returned out of that $600,000 appropriation. The enterprise funds all performed well. As you can see here, they all had a favorable budget variance. The airport was extremely favorable at $6.6 million, and that was a result of the CARES Act grant that they received for $18 million. They charged off a portion of their operating expenses to that grant in accordance with the grant guidelines that could do that. And that's, this is the last time they will do that. The remaining funds that they do have will be used to fund some capital improvements out there. But every enterprise fund had a favorable budget variance for fiscal year 2022. Here are the certified surplus balances that we just received certification from the Department of Revenue for. You can see all of these, with the exception of the Hyannis Youth and Community Center and Sur Enterprise Fund realized an increase in their certified surplus. The reason why those two funds went down is we used more to balance their 2023 operating and capital budgets than what they generated in 2022, but still all very strong balances. There's a percentage, a chart that illustrates the reserves. It's a percentage of the FY '23 operating budget. We have four enterprise funds that have over 100% of their operating budget in the reserve. The airport, very close to 100%. Gulf Enterprise Funds, close to 60% now. They used to be down to about 25%. The Solid Waste Enterprise Fund is almost at 50%, or about six months of operating expenses. A Water Enterprise Fund has improved to 27%. It's almost a quarter of the year. And the General Fund and HYCC Enterprise Funds are at around 15%. We like to see a target of at least 50% for the enterprise operations, so we are there for most of them, with the exception of the HYCC. However, that enterprise fund's rather unique, as it receives a substantial general fund subsidy. Achieving a 50% target isn't realistic. Here is from other noteworthy special revenue funds that we have. We have about $12.8 million in the Sewer Construction and Prior Way Fund. We generate about $3.2 million in fiscal year 2022, and we project to generate close to $3.3 million in fiscal year 2023. We used $3.9 million of that $12 million to pay for the FY '23 CWMP operating budget. We have a Circuit Breaker Special Education Fund with $2.1 million in it. That will be used to offset fiscal year '23 special education costs. We expect about another $2 million to come in in fiscal year 2023, and that will be used to cover 2024 special education costs. And then in our School Choice account, we have close to $2 million. In that, we generated about $611,000 in 2022. Expect to generate at least another $575 in 2023. And we plan to use $1.4 million of that balance as of June 30th, 2022 for some FY '23 budget. Some noteworthy trust funds that we have are the Capital Trust Stabilization Fund, which we use to finance our general fund capital program. We have the Top Trust Fund, which is managed by an independent trustee. We're all familiar with that one. We've been here for a number of years. It receives awards to the School Department for special projects. We have that other post-employment benefits trust fund that we created several years ago. It has nearly $8 million in it now. It contributed about over $700,000 this year to that, we're expecting. And we continue to increase that contribution every year, and that practice has resulted in a substantial reduction in that unfunded liability. Then we have a couple of sizable trust funds that we use to help offset some cemetery costs. Um, the Kirkman's also provides funding from time to time to our Seven Village Libraries for special projects. And then we have the Comprehensive Water Management Stabilization Fund, which is used for water and sewer capital, um, in operations. And that's where we voted to create a fund using the short-term rental tax. Two point nine, nearly three million dollars in that fund at the end of the fiscal year. And we have a water supply stabilization fund, which receives the host community payments um, with, for the host community agreement that we entered into with Vineyard Wind, and that's dedicated for our water supply operation. Moving into revenue and expenditure forecasts for the next year and the years beyond. First, if we take a look at the history of our general fund revenue, it has increased from about a hundred and thirty-three million to a hundred and seventy-six million dollars over this period of time. It's an average increase of about three point six percent a year. Hasn't changed much from year to year. Our general fund revenue is composed of these five categories. Almost ninety-five percent of our general fund revenue has consistently been made up of four categories of revenue. Property taxes, state aid, motor vehicle excise, and local rooms excise. Those are the four biggest individual categories of revenue that we receive, so I'm going to focus a little bit more on those four categories. Here's our fiscal year two thousand twenty three projected tax levy. We take that prior year levy limit, we increase it by two and a half percent. We're estimating new growth at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty three. It's probably going to come in a little bit higher. We're wrapping up the calculation of that now. But that's what we use to balance the budget. We have a couple of voter-approved exclusions that we add to the levy every year. The first one being the debt exclusion for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School's new project and the Cape Cod Commission Assessment that we receive. Both of those get added to the tax levy, which results in a hundred and forty point five million projected for fiscal year twenty three, which is a three point one percent increase. Here's a history of our tax levy. From fiscal year fourteen to what we're projecting in twenty three, a hundred and four million to a hundred and forty-one million. However, take a look at the override capacity that the town has realized in growth in. It has grown from two hundred and eleven million to almost double, four hundred and six million, um, we're projecting for twenty three. And that's a result of a significant increase in property value that we are projecting for fiscal year twenty three. The values that come out on the two thousand and twenty three tax bills are going to be based on calendar year sales that were made in two thousand and twenty one. The really strong residential property market in two thousand and twenty one, and we're going to see significant increases in valuations for residential property. That's going to result in a significant increase in the override capacity that the town has. And here's the resulting tax rate that we're projecting. You can see in this chart that the tax rate projected for fiscal year twenty three is six dollars and forty-three cents. That's before a residential exemption, if one is approved again. Um, but, and that's lower than where it was almost ten years ago. Um, and that's a result of those increasing values. If the council were to adopt a twenty percent residential exemption again, residential rate would go up to about just over seven dollars. And that CIP rate, or Commercial Industrial and Personal Property Tax Rate, will remain at six dollars and forty-three cents. And that could change a penny or two by the time we get everything certified by the Department of Revenue, um, which we anticipate to do next month. Here's a history on our new property tax growth. As we came out of the recession, um, from two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten, we started to see a steady increase in property tax growth to the point where it reached one point four million in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen. However, it's been a steady decline since then, which is why we use seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate balanced to two thousand and twenty three budget. Again, we think it's going to come in a little bit stronger than that. Here's a history of the property tax debt exclusions on the levy for the past ten years, nine years. Um, we had a number of two debt exclusions for local school projects, our high school renovation and intermediate school renovations, um, that expired in two thousand and nineteen. Um, kind of fortuitous that Cape Cod Regional Tech High Schools debt exclusion came on the following year, two thousand and twenty. It wasn't planned by them. It just so happened that, um, their project coincided nicely with the expiring debt service on our projects, so it didn't result in a significant spike in the tax levy in two thousand and twenty. Um, so it was good timing on their part. This is how that debt exclusion assessment is allocated to the participating towns who send students to that school. It's based on a percentage of enrollment, um, for each community. And Barnstable has historically been anywhere from twenty-five to thirty, thirty-one percent. We're currently at about twenty-eight percent of the overall enrollment, so we receive an assessment for twenty-eight percent of the debt service. And that, that, we can, we expect to continue to be about the same over the next five-year period. And here's a projection of the tax levy for the next five-year period. We take that prior year levy limit, we increase it by two and a half percent in accordance with Proposition Two and a Half. We are expecting some improvement in our new growth over the next few years as a result of Vineyard Wind's infrastructure coming on to the tax rolls. Um, as they contin, continue building out that project, that's all taxable personal property, which will get added to the tax rolls in the upcoming years. And so we're projecting a little stronger growth. And then we have the exclusion for the tech school, the exclusion for the Cape Cod Commission Assessment. And then for illustrative purposes here, we put in the debt exclusion that we would need to maintain level services, um, when we start implementing the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plans projects for fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Those debt service payments would come on in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. And as we first presented this information to the council back in November of two thousand twenty one, I believe, um, these are what the debt exclusions would look like if we want to maintain the current services and programs that we provide. So that results in a, almost a six percent increase in the projected levy in twenty twenty-six. Uh, just over four percent in twenty-seven and almost another, about another five point six percent in twenty twenty eight. Here's a history of our general fund state aid that we received. You've noticed a significant increase in two thousand and twenty-three with the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, which Superintendent Hearn will talk a little bit more about this evening. Um, we saw a significant increase in our Chapter Seventy-eight, um, due to the, uh, early implementation or the accelerated implementation, um, of that act. The state was behind in implementing it, so they, they accelerated its implementation over a shorter period of time. Plus some changing demographics, which our superintendent will illustrate to you as well, contributed to the increase in that aid. And then here's what we're projecting for state aid in the subsequent years. We are, we expect to see a continued increase in Chapter Seventy-eight offset by some decreases in charter reimbursements and veterans' benefits mostly. But a, about a two and a half percent increase on average in state aid. Here's a history of the second major, the third major category of general fund revenue, which is our motor vehicle excise tax. Again, um, going into the recession here in two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, you can see it dropped significantly, lost over one point five million dollars of revenue in this category during that last great recession. Then as we came out of the recession, we saw a gradual improvement in this revenue source to the point where it exceeded nine million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. We, that's the highest amount we've ever collected. Some of that was associated with a late tax bill that went out in June of two thousand and twenty-one. So all the revenue came in in two thousand and twenty-two. Registry of Motor Vehicles got it out to us late. We didn't mail it till June, so the bills weren't due until July. That contributes somewhat to that spike that we saw in two thousand and twenty-two. Here is the history over the same time period of vehicle sales, um, seasonally adjusted vehicle sales um, in the United States, and our revenue similarly trends with vehicle sales, as you can see. The area shaded in gray here is our recessionary periods. We had one back in the early two thousands. We had great recession between two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten. No one lasted for almost eighteen months, one of the longest recessions we've ever seen. Um, you can see vehicle sales significantly dropped during that time period. But then they gradually improved in the subsequent years, just like our revenue gradually improved in those subsequent years. And then when the pandemic hit, the sales wound out. Nobody was selling cars. Um, and we all remember why, uh, supply shortages, uh, shutdowns and factories. Um, but then after about six months, things got back online, things opened back up. Sales started to pick up again, and we're back up to fifteen, sixteen million dollars in sales. They're down again recently. Um, it's becoming challenging again. We're down to about, what? Twelve million, I think, yeah, fifteen, fourteen million dollars in sales is September two thousand and twenty-two. And so we're cautiously optimistic in this revenue category in subsequent years. And here's what we're projecting. We don't think we'll be at nine million dollars again. Um, however, we do believe it'll be closer to eight million, maybe a little better than eight million. So we're, we're going to use an est, we used an estimate for two thousand and twenty-three of eight million dollars, and then we expect that to gradually improve, um, over the next four-year period. And here's a history of our general fund rooms tax. Um, this is taxed on traditional lodging only. That's all that goes into the general fund. There's a portion of the rooms tax for traditional lodging. Uh, you can see the actual tax we collected in two thousand and twenty-one dropped significantly from two million down to about one point two million, and that was a result of the pandemic. However, it came roaring back in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, two point two million, the highest we've ever seen. Um, people started coming back to the Cape, and we saw significant growth in the tourism industry down here. Everything was busy. We see it in our meals tax revenue as well. All of our waterside revenue has significantly improved. Uh, but this category, again, we think we conservatively budgeted about one point eight million for two thousand and twenty-three, but we expect it to continue to improve. We can back up to that two point two million that we saw in two thousand and twenty-two. Looking on the expenditure side, there's a history of the budgets. Um, the three major categories, fixed costs, school operations, and municipal operations. These have trended at an average increase of about three point four percent a year, a little bit less than what our general fund revenue is trending at, three point six cent increase a year. Here's our projected operating budgets. Um, this is based upon projected available revenue. This is what we can afford based on those projected revenues um, and reserve balances that we have in place. And it also includes the assumption that a debt exclusion is used to fund the CWMP in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. And that debt service associated with those debt exclusions are included in the fixed cost category here. And you can see by fiscal year twenty-eight, our fixed costs are now as much as our school operating budget because of the significant increase in debt service. Again, this is just for illustrative purposes. Decision has not been made. It requires a lot of work to get to that point. But making those assumptions, these are what we, uh, the resulting deficits that we project in the operating budgets for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, they grow to about four million dollars a year. These are manageable based on what we've been able to generate surplus for fiscal year, and here's an illustration of that. We have consistently used, um, anywhere from a million to four million dollars of our general fund reserves to balance our operating budget, on an average of about two point nine million a year over this ten-year period. However, we've generated, on the average, over six million dollars a year. So this illustrates a structurally balanced budget, and we should be able to afford to cover those budget shortfalls in the out years using general fund reserves, assuming that we can continue to generate general fund reserves by using the conservative revenue estimates that we do and encouraging, um, unexpendable appropriations when appropriate. And then jumping into some other relevant information, um, which is good for budget planning purposes. This is what we're projecting for the CWMP program resources and expenditures over the next five years. We have our rooms tax on traditional lodging. A portion of that is dedicated to this program. We have our meals tax. It's dedicated to this program. Rooms tax and short-term rentals, assuming that's all dedicated to this program. And then what we started doing in two thousand and twenty-three is dedicating more general fund money to the capital program, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Assuming we do that every year for five years, that'll eventually get us up to three point seven million dollars of Capital Trust Fund contribution towards this program. And that's assuming we use it all for the CWMP and not other capital projects. Result is we end up to getting close to ten million dollars of preapparent revenues for this program by two thousand and twenty-eight. And then on the expenditure side, we now have, um, several staff involved in operating expenses and operating capital associated with the implementation of this program that is being paid for from these resources. We already have some authorized and issued debt that we're paying from these resources. We have several projects that we have authorized, but yet have not issued the debt for, but we will be issuing that soon. That's two point six million dollars a year. And then the projected future debt and that capital, uh, for the CWMP for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight is illustrated here. And here's the joke point. We get two thousand and twenty-six, and we have five point four million dollars of new debt. It has to be, it's part of this program, and we have a cash shortfall of two point two million dollars that year. And it just grows on that without additional revenue. Here are those estimated costs for the CWMP for the next five years or four years. It's three hundred and twenty-six million dollars in projects. These numbers are all going to change. We're working on putting these together for the next capital plan. I'm sure there's going to be some changes in some of these numbers, but it's significant. It's over three hundred million in capital project costs. The next column illustrates what those estimated loan payments are on that capital amount. Assuming we receive some principal subsidies as well, that's factored into here. Assuming thirty-year amortization, assuming an interest rate associated with a longer amortization period will pay a little higher interest rate. And these are the, um, the estimated loan payments and that amount of debt over thirty years. And this is when initial payment begins on those loans in the third, fourth column here. And then the amount that would be needed to add to the tax levy in order to deserve existing programs and services. And the capital program submissions that other, we still have a lot of other capital program submissions for our enterprise funds and our general fund programs. They total another three hundred and seventy-six million dollars here. We can't forget about those. We have, we're still working on, um, implementing these as well, and these numbers are all going to go up. They're just part of our five-year plan that's being developed, uh, for next spring for our discussion. So to fund all this capital, we have to issue bonds, and borrowing rates are going up. We see it in our personal lives with everything that we borrow money for, whether it's a vehicle or you want to buy a house. We feel it in the municipal side as well. Um, here's a history of the interest rates that we've paid in our general obligation bond issues. We've enjoyed some of the lowest borrowing costs in the history of municipal borrowing, um, back in, starting in two thousand and twelve and still well below what we were paying back in two thousand and four, over four, four percent, going up. Um, they were at two point, our last issue in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, it was two point two percent. We're hearing triple A ratings. Our, uh, community selling bonds with triple A ratings last week. They're selling, those bonds are selling at over four percent. And our borrowing rates in the municipal environment are closely tied to the ten-year treasury rate. And here, as of October tenth, the ten-year treasury rate was three point nine percent. It's over four percent this week. And so we can just expect these rates to continue to climb if the Federal Reserve continues to take the same policy approach that they have recently and, and increasing. in increasing borrowing rates to try to slow the economy down, it's going to impact what we incur as a borrowing rate on our general obligation bond issues. And I'm going to pause here and turn it over to Superintendent O'Hearn, who is going to review with you some student enrollment and school spending trends.
Thank you, Mark. Hello and good evening to our town councilors and our school committee members. As Mark noted, I will share some information with you related to student enrollment trends as well as some school spending information. Gareth Markwell will also be joining me. The next series of slides talks about some recent trends in terms of our enrollment, which we are watching very, very carefully. As you know, school enrollment, especially the October 1 enrollment, drives Chapter 78 for the following fiscal year. Our preliminary enrollment as of a couple of weeks ago, we are up to 4,870 students after a low in the 2021 school year. Many districts, Barnstable included, experienced a significant decline as a result of the pandemic with students and families making alternative choices, in particular homeschool. But we are seeing some increases, which I think coincides with Barnstable being one of the top locations for influx of population in recent years, according to the U.S. Postal Service. I do have a few numbers to break down for you. I'll go through them quickly, but most notably, the increase is being seen in our K-3 population or pre-K to 3 population, where we have about 100 more students. So I would anticipate that that, as the students go through the system, that that increase could be sustained over the coming years. And we'll have final numbers after our numbers get certified more towards the December timeframe, but we are seeing an increase, which is, which is welcome news. Next slide. This is a summary of the last six school years and the class sizes by grade. We did not include the most recent set of numbers in this chart, as this was taken from the Department of Education, but did quantify the number of new students that we registered over the summer at 394. That is actually up to 414 since this slide was put together. The previous superintendent had shared how the subgroups had been changing in Barnstable, which is significant in terms of the budget as it relates to the Student Opportunity Act, as well as our increased costs associated with education today. I know that there's kind of a question out there about enrollment decreasing over a period of time. Why do costs keep going up? And that is because the cost to educate children continues to increase, and we'll talk a little bit more about some of those budget drivers going forward. But I think it's important to note, in terms of some subgroup populations, the increase that we've seen in the last five years. So I will point out from this slide, the large increase in the percentage of students who are English learners, which is a designation that has quantification behind it based on assessments that our educators give. We are above 20% English learners now in Barnstable and welcome the diversity that a rich language culture can bring. This slide shows students with disabilities remaining relatively stable over the last five years, with a slight decrease showing currently. I do anticipate that that purple bar will increase a little bit over the course of the year as new students qualify for individualized education plans based on their disability. Overall, our students who are economically disadvantaged is increasing, just over 60% in the 2023 school year. And so that is something that we are responding to, and I have some good news to share from our Food Services Department, in that they have secured free breakfast and free lunch for all children in Barnstable for the next four years. The high needs category is an unduplicated count of those three subgroups, and you can see that we're approaching 70% with a high needs designation, which is a definition that the Department of Education holds. Next slide. How this relates to funding and the budget is directly related to the Student Opportunity Act. So Chapter 78 is based on a formula based on your enrollment and what grade students are in, as well as whether or not they are categorized in these subgroups. And in 2015, a statewide commission studied the adequacy of education and concluded that the state was underfunding education in some critical areas, and that includes for students with special needs, students who are English learners, and students who are economically disadvantaged. So they reset the formula and came up with a package. Every district in the state benefited to some certain extent, although some had more significant increases to their state funding than others, Barnstable being one of them. They began a three-year implementation in FY22, based on the 2019 law that was developed. The foundation budget in Barnstable increased by 10.4 million, so that is what the state is setting as an adequate per pupil expenditure for, for Barnstable children. And as a result, the state increased Chapter 78 or School Aid by five and a half million. Wanted to share with the town council this slide that we shared with the school committee a couple of weeks as well, looking at Barnstable Public Schools attrition rates. Overall, as noted, we have some, an increase in our student enrollment, and we had a pretty significant number of students moving in over the summer. We do watch carefully in terms of students and the attrition rates within the district. The largest percentage is seen in that eighth to ninth grade transition, as students experience more choices at the high school level. And we have also seen more attrition from fifth to sixth grade, again, as, as families exercise additional choices at that grade span. Overall, in the district, over the last five years, on the right-hand side, it all kind of averages out, although we do keep tabs, and we do some qualitative surveys, which we're going to be improving upon, some qualitative surveys to, to better understand why families may be withdrawing their students from Barnstable. With the data that we have collected, the number one reason is that families are moving out of Barnstable, and the number two reason is private school. So we're going to be seeking additional information from families as they withdraw children, so that we can understand, because some of our families are leaving this information blank. So we're keeping close tabs on this. We want to keep our Barnstable students and whole school choice students into Barnstable. We have a wealth of offerings, and I'm so very proud to be here as your superintendent. I will note, however, that we do have some space constraints, and one of the things that Mr. Milne had just talked about was the use of school choice funds and how those are being applied to the budget, and that has been allocated towards portables at two of our schools, High West and BCIS. So we are doing a facilities analysis study, which I think is really important for both the school committee and the town council. It's underway now, looking at the condition of our facilities, as well as kind of the adequacy and space utilization of our facilities, given our enrollment forecast. We are, like I said, bringing on portables, and so space is something that we're going to have to be taking a look at. The next slide demonstrates some trends related to Barnstable resident children going to other school districts. We are experiencing an increase in the public and private sector. We do not have FY23 numbers yet on that, but we have seen a decrease and a return of many students who had previously been homeschooled in recent years to the public school setting. One of the things I think we sometimes wonder, and that's where the qualitative information comes in, is around why students may be choosing other public school options. And in looking at the geographic data, one might infer that there are some geographic choices based on, for example, the students in the green choicing to Dennis Yarmouth, the yellow dots representing students who are school tracing into Mashpee, and red into Sandwich. And so there does seem to be some clustering in that regard. I think it's important to consider Barnstable's enrollment as well in terms of the public school enrollment across Cape Cod towns. As I had noted, we had a decrease from '20 to '21 and are starting to kind of tick back up post-pandemic, but that's not, that's not unusual. Many area districts saw a decrease and are either remaining stable, and a couple are increasing as well. It follows a general trend in Massachusetts, where overall in Massachusetts, the school age population decreased in terms of public school enrollment, remained relatively stable in the second year, and we do not yet have the '22, '23 numbers. So that's a bit about enrollment. As we look forward to the next budget cycle, I want to be sure to anchor the conversation and our view in light of our purpose and what we're here for. We recently had four goals approved by the school committee for the '22, '23 school year, and as we look ahead, I'll be working with the school committee based on my entry plan and report of findings to develop longer-term goals. However, I would anticipate that many of these areas continue forward in some fashion to make sure that we're fostering a sense of belonging for children. We are monitoring their understanding of academics. We're ensuring a strong grade inappropriate instruction in academics and social emotional skills, and that we are maintaining a current competitive and innovative curriculum, and that we're planning professional development to support our educators in implementing And Gareth will take the next few slides.
Good evening, councilors and school committee members. Gareth Markwell, Deputy Finance Director. Here we have the FY21 spending on education, and FY21 being our most recently audited financial information, both by our independent auditors and then also a submission to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So if we look at financial information across the Commonwealth for schools, the most recent financial information is the FY21 year, so we refer to that for that reason. Often, we, we get hung up on the general fund budget that the school committee presents kind of later in the budget cycle each year, but spending on, in education in our community is actually a lot more than that one appropriation that, that you'll see us for in April. If you look at FY21, our total spending in the community was $110,777,611. The chart on the, the pie chart on the left, the segments in blue totaling 90% our, our general fund-supported education operations. The dark blue at 63% or just over $70 million was expenditures by the school committee through appropriation of the town council. 27% just over, sorry, just under $30 million was municipal, municipal fixed cost expenses, things like benefits, debt service for school buildings, spending from revolving funds, 4%. So those are different fees that the district may collect for things like athletics or school lunch, and 6% in federal and state entitlement grants, right around 6.6 million. That's a little high in FY21 for the federal and state grants. That was a large COVID spending year. We would tend to track more around the 3.5 to 4 million mark in federal and state grants. That translates into the right bar graph, where you can see exactly how those funds are expended. As you would expect, starting at the bottom, you've got your majority of expenses going towards instruction or teacher salaries. The second largest category, benefits and fixed charges. So again, that's the employee insurance benefits. Third category there would be out-of-district tuition, followed by other teaching services. So that would be the paraprofessionals and like positions in the district. Next slide. When we talk about expenditures on education, I quite often get asked, how do we compare per pupil to other districts, or what is, what is our per pupil spending in Barnstable? The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education typically provides comparisons based on the in-district per pupil expense. And we do this, we strip away things like out-of-district tuitions, regional assessments, and choice students, along with capital improvement dollars. And we do that so that we can get a kind of an apples-to-apples comparison of per pupil costs throughout the Commonwealth. In 2019, we were hovering at about $17,103 per student. That would be for school administration, leadership, teachers, professional development materials, guidance, pupil services, operation and maintenance, which would include care of facilities, and then insurance and retirement costs. You can see that amount was not really, didn't really change going into 2020, but you'll see the large increase of about $1,800 per student going from 2020 to the 2021 school year. If you do the math, multiply the, the $1,800 by 5,000 odd students, you're, you're talking about millions of dollars there. However, that's somewhat, that hides, hides the fact that the, there was enrollment changes. So the actual budget changed year over year from '20 to '21, was closer to $2 million. The state average in FY21 was $18,556, so our spending was a little higher than the state average in '21. Some of the reasons for that spending change in '21, largely, we had to onboard more staff due to response to the pandemic. Smaller class sizes, social distancing dictated that we needed to have more staff available to educate smaller cohorts of students. Next slide. The same in districts, per pupil expenditure formula, looking across the, our regional partners, Falmouth, Sandwich, DY, and Mashpee. Typically, we trend slightly behind our pairs on our per pupil spending. You see that same trend of FY21 really ballooning up in, in the post or during the pandemic year. I, I would expect to see drop-offs in our FY22, a small drop-off, and then a gradual plateau in '23 and '24, as we settle down to more of a stable school format. If we include some communities that represent similar profiles in the, in the form of ability to pay, or property values, or income levels, we typically look at Medford and Marlborough. We typically trend right along with them. Medford's slightly ahead, ahead of us at this point in time. Again, you can see the state average, the FY21 high of $18,856, and Barnstable's growth from $15,625. and Barnstable's growth from 15,625 dollars to 19,252 dollars in FY21.
So Gareth and I'll share this slide. Just want to preview for both the school committee and the town council, what are some anticipated school budget drivers at kind of early in this process? Just to kind of lay it out and be able to prepare. We just recently, within the past couple of weeks, received information from Operational Services Division, which sets the out of district special education tuition rate increase. And the news that we had is not a good one. They're informing districts to anticipate a 14% increase in our out of district tuition. Typically, we plan for and have experienced a we planned for a 3%. And historically, it's been a 2 to 3% increase. But given that small amount of increase and inflation, we are anticipating a larger increase kind of as one of the major budget drivers this year. This is not just a Barnstable thing. This is happening across the state. And I would anticipate, and I know that as part of the town council strategic plan, there has been a goal area or a focus area of advocacy in support of the schools. This may well be in the short term, one of the places of advocacy advocacy with our legislators where they may be able to provide some support for districts in absorbing this increase, which is largely out of our control.
Another budget driver anticipated for FY24. Whether or not it will eventuate, but it's something that we're monitoring will be our gas and gasoline and diesel budgets. We budget approximately 300,000 dollars annually for this expense. We use approximately 83,000 gallons of diesel each year for our large bus transportation. And about a quarter of that, about 21,000 in gasoline for our small bus and van fleet. Our current diesel rates are thankfully locked in to the end of this fiscal year. We we been in a very lucky position having those rates locked in, especially in the last six to nine months with the significant increases in both gasoline and diesel. But going into FY24, we will be looking to to hopefully lock in some new rates. But we're fearful that because we are at a favorable rate right now, any any change to the market rates will have impacts on our budget. We're looking at the area of about a 15 to 20% increase in these lines. So that would be a budget driver for us of approximately 45 to 60,000 dollars in new costs for this transportation line.
And lastly, I wanted to paint a picture related to salaries and contracted services. I, while we do have a few vacancies that we're struggling to fill, we're not alone. Many Cape districts and actually districts all across the state are looking for school psychologists, for example, and speech and language pathologists. That being said, we are well staffed in terms of classroom teachers, special educators. With the exception of some of those specialized positions that I had just mentioned, including English language development teachers. But in order to be fully staffed, we've had to apply lots of tools and creativity to recruit individuals to Barnstable. And I just want to share a few trends that I'm noticing and how I think that this will shape up in the near future in terms of in terms of our of our recruitment and our budget. The first is that we have a larger number of individuals on emergency licenses or waivers from the state. The state is allowing for great creativity for districts. And again, Barnstable's not alone. Great creativity for districts in bringing in new educators. But these new educators need and deserve, and I think it behooves us to have a greater investment in them to become fully licensed and highly qualified educators in our schools. So I anticipate that being an area for focus. The other trend that we're seeing is that while we're used to experiencing budget favorability in terms of our salary line, where we have educators retiring at high steps on the salary scale and we hire at lower steps, for example, master's step four. And we experience favorability based on a person who may be departed at masters plus 30 step 15. We are not experiencing favorability in our salary line this year. And my my theory around that has to do with the cost of housing. And therefore, the candidates who ended up in our candidate pools that we hired, who are excellent, excellent educators, and we're so fortunate to have them are on the higher end of the salary schedule. And I think that that's reflective of the affordability and some migration of folks from off Cape to to be living here. So I just wanted to kind of paint that picture about what we're seeing from a salary standpoint. It is one of the biggest cost areas of our budget. And those are some trends that I think won't go away soon. And then because of the vacancies that I had mentioned, our lines in contracted services is increasing because we have to seek out resources outside of the district in order to supplement services for children.
Great. Thank you, Sarah and Gareth. I'm going to wrap it up here with a couple of more slides to just to illustrate the proposed policy agreement on general fund revenue sharing. We are continuing to recommend or proposing that we go forward with a policy of revenue sharing that is similar to what we've been conducted, that has been conducted over the past several years. And first, what we do, what we're proposing is that we take all the growth in general fund revenue and reduce it by the cost increases in our fixed cost category first to make sure that those are all covered. And whatever's left over after those cost increases will be distributed between school and municipal operating budgets on a 60 to 40 basis. Those fixed cost increases once again include another contribution of 750,000 dollars increased funding to the capital program before that 60, 40 split number is determined. We're proposing that the savings accounts, once again, municipal and school savings accounts are credited with their respective returned appropriations at the end of fiscal year 23. And we're also consistent with prior years, proposing that any excess revenue that is generated in the general fund and returned appropriations in the fixed cost category are shared on a 60, 40 basis as well and distributed to those to those respective savings accounts. And then finally, the use of any of the savings accounts for the FY24 operating capital budgets course is subject to the town council appropriation. So this is what we're looking at for general fund revenue growth for fiscal year 24. We're looking at about 8.1 million dollars in revenue growth for 4.4%. We're expecting fixed cost increases right now to come in at just over 2.7 million dollars. And that'll leave us with about just under 3 point or 5.4 million dollars to distribute between municipal and school operations on a 60, 40 basis. So that results in 2.149 million being allocated to the municipal operations and 3.223 million to the school operations. And here's a look at the savings accounts. Now, we just had our general fund certified. We take the beginning balance in those savings accounts from last year. We reduce them by what was used to balance our FY23 operating budgets and capital programs. And then we credit back those returned appropriations from the operating budgets from fiscal year 22. Returned appropriations in the fixed cost category and the net excess revenue earned back to the respective savings accounts on a 60, 40 basis. So that results in a certified free cash at the end of the year of 26.769 million. 8.272 is allocated to the municipal savings, 11.3346 to the school savings. And the council's reserve stands at 7.15 million, which represents 4% of the FY23 operating budget in accordance with the town council policy. And then finally, again, the use of any of these savings accounts is subject to town council appropriation. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your patience and attention this evening. I'll stop sharing my screen and we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Finance Director Mark Millen, Assistant Finance Director Gareth Markwell, and also Superintendent Sarah Hearn for the presentation. Appreciate that detailed slides, a lot of information to digest. And I do want to hand over the meeting to the chairman of the school committee, Mike Judge, to see if he or any of the members of the school committee have questions for our panel.
First of all, I want to want to start off by thanking Mark, Gareth and Sarah for that great presentation. Excellent job as always, very informative. So to the school committee members, are there any questions? Andre? None? Kathy? None? Either end of you on my screen.
I don't see anybody's hand up.
No, I don't see anybody's hands up. So no, I think we're all set. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Excellent.
Put it back over to you, President Levesque.
Thank you. That being said, any questions, comments from the town council? Council Letky, please.
Yeah, those were great presentations. When I look at the two combined and I see the increase in the property tax rates that Mr. Millen talked about and then the students that are low income households. I think that I don't know how this is done. This probably isn't the venue for it. But Mr. Millen mentioned it about the residential tax exemption. I would hope we could have a discussion about increasing that to the maximum amount to help our our residents. And you know, with what we're facing ahead, I don't know what these tax rates are going to be, but it sounds like they're going to be pretty high. And I'd like to help our residents by having that discussion in the appropriate venue. And then the other question I had was our fee to the Cape Cod Commission. What is that number based on? And does that get us some sort of private fund at the Cape Cod Commission, something, or is every town assessed at some sort of rate? Thank you.
Yes, I I can take those questions.
Please, thank you.
So we will be in November coming before the town council to discuss two tax levy shifting options that are available for the town council to consider, which is one is splitting the tax rate between the commercial property, industrial and personal property and the residential property. And a second one would be adopting a residential exemption percentage. Right now council has consistently adopted a 20% exemption for primary homeowners. You could go up to as high as 35%. And we will be presenting those tax levy shifting options at one of your November meetings, probably your next meeting, actually. I think we're going to try to get it on there for November 3rd. Secondly, the Cape Cod Commission assessment, when the Cape Cod Commission was created decades ago, the entire Cape, the creation of that commission was voted on by the entire Cape Town group and to which authorized the cost of running the Cape Cod Commission to be shared based on every town's equalized valuation. So Barnstable's 30% of the entire equalized valuation of all Cape communities. We receive 30% in the form of an assessment of their operating. And so they provide services to all 15 Cape Towns. And for that, we are assessed on an annual basis as well as the other 15 towns.
Thank you, Mark, and and thank you, Council Letky. Those are those are great questions. And and I would also be in favor of, again, no stone unturned in looking at that the tax exemption. Increasing that, I think that's definitely an option. Council Mendes, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. What percentage of the cost of the school budget is used for ground maintenance?
Gareth, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I can certainly pull that up if you want to have another question. I'll find that for you.
Are we bringing up the slides?
He was asking to take another question.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that. Council Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Director Millen, I know one of the things you mentioned in looking at various tax increases or increased revenues from taxes was that set aside of the short term rental taxes into the comprehensive wastewater water trust fund. What percentage, and I saw that that number went up substantially, and I know a part of that is because people started moving around and traveling again. I'm curious as to what part of that increase, if any, is from increased compliance with people operating short term rentals who are now registered with both the state and the town?
Well, that's a good question. We will have to do some research on that and analyze that and get back to you with an answer.
Okay. I guess I'm more curious about, well, as part of the increase, where are we at in terms of compliance? Because I know at one point, and not a question for you or for now, but I know at one point, we actually had numbers as to what the state had reported versus what was on our books.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that can also be part, just to follow up on that, a part of an update, quite honestly, of our short term rental policy. I mean, the the software that we use and things that I need to the compliance. And so that that could definitely be something that we can put in our future agenda, talk about it at larger scope. Thank you for that, Council Shaughnessy, and Council Clark, please.
Perhaps Gareth is ready? I don't know.
Yes, certainly. Just looking at the trends from 2019 through 21, you're looking at our operations and maintenance budgets of making up about 7. Sorry, 8% to about 7.5% from that period of time. That would include our buildings and ground staff, our custodial staff, and would also include our utility budgets. I can and I can certainly provide more detailed information at a later time for you.
Yeah, could you please? Thank you.
Any other follow up, Council Mendes?
Yeah, we're just, what's the percentage that the town pays for teachers' benefits?
So I can this one. So health insurance, the town pays 50% health insurance. The cost shares 50 50 with employees in the town. And and the pensions, teachers' pensions are entirely paid for by the state of Massachusetts. Town doesn't have to pay anything towards teachers' pensions.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just while we're on that topic, Mark, what is the dollar value of the expenditure on that health insurance?
Yes, so our total budget for health insurance for active employees is about 8 million dollars. Our health insurance for retired school employees is about 3.5 million dollars. And health insurance for retired municipal employees is about 1.6 million.
So can is there a number, I'm sorry, maybe you just said that, but is there a number that just consolidates what we, as far as the school costs? Just the teachers?
Yeah, yeah. So out of the out of the 8 million for active employees, about 500, 5 million of that is for teachers and 3 million for municipal employees because they represent about 60% of the workforce force.
So roughly about 8, 9 million dollars, somewhere in there between retirement and current teachers. And that's actually not included, just so councilors know, that's actually not included in the school budget, correct? That we approve? That's outside of that? Okay, even though it's
In the fixed cost.
Right, in the fixed cost, correct. And I understand that, you know, I want to get into the, you know, down a rabbit hole in regards to that, but it's a significant amount of money that's not necessarily approved in our that goes towards schools essentially. So any other questions? Councilor Clark, please. Any other questions? Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Lavek, and thank you, Mark, Gareth, and Sarah for this comprehensive presentation. I appreciate that. So you know, my question, number one, will be, is this presentation, PowerPoint presentation available for the public to see? And where?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. I was negligent in mentioning that at the beginning of my presentation, but we have put it up on the town's website under the Town Council area.
Thank you very much. And secondly, I, as the slides went by, I happened to notice, so I may have an incorrect reference here. But with this understanding of the 60/40 split, there was one slide where there was a reference that the school expenditure was 63% and the municipal was 27%. So did that drift away from the 60/40? Or, like I said, I didn't quite grasp the reference.
Yeah, so when you look at just the operating budgets and the net revenue, just, just looking at the current municipal operating budget and the current school operating budget, it's about a 63/37% split. School spending representing, or school budget representing about 63%. And so the policy that we've had has always been split in revenue 60/40, even though the school's percentage of the overall operating budgets is three percentage points higher than that. It used to be even more than that, but it was around 65 when we started this 60/40 revenue sharing agreement, so it's down to about 63% now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Council Hatzles, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to piggyback on my fellow counselor, Jeff Mendes, question. I think what we're getting at, what we'd like to know, it's, it's not just about salaries and such, but we'd like to know specifically how the budget's being spent on the actual maintenance of the fields. I think it's no secret that the last number of years under previous leadership, it's been pretty poor. We know that they just put down a new turf football field, but even that was done before its lifespan, because it was poorly maintained to begin with. So we can't cover up poor maintenance by putting down turf. We have grass fields that need to be maintained better to reduce injuries and so it'll last longer. So we'd like to know specifically where the budget's being spent on the actual fields. And then we can get into the building maintenance, probably at another date, but that's also another issue. We have great vape sensors, but we have toilets that don't flush properly. So we'd like to get, we're probably going to need to dive into that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hatzles. Any other comments, questions? The councilors? I see that there's a, and I understand that we saw a significant increase in teacher salaries, the expenditure that's been related to COVID and the amount, the class size, social distancing, and things of that nature. And with the decrease essentially of, of, over the last five years of student enrollment, do you foresee, I'm assuming, because the biggest expenditure last year was an increased salaries because of the need of more English as a second language learners, if I'm kind of reminding, just reviewing this in my own mind. Do you foresee that continually to increase? Or do you see opportunity that, quite honestly, you may not need as many teachers due to the fact that you can, you know, is, do you see increased class sizes now because of the fact that you don't have to have the social distancing that you had before? There's a few questions in there, yes. Sarah, Superintendent Hearn, if you can answer that, that'd be great.
Sure. So I can maybe tackle a few things here, although I was not here during COVID. So I may need Gareth to kind of chime in a little bit about what class sizes were like. But, you know, my understanding is that, is that additional staff were brought on for social distancing and class sizes were lower. And now we are kind of operating very differently. A lot of those provisions are no longer in place, although we are keeping everybody safe in the schools. And our class sizes at the elementary level, for example, are around 20. We have some class sizes that are in the low 20s and bumping up against our contractual limits in, in a couple of areas. And so I think we're doing well in terms of balancing that class size piece, accepting students where appropriate in school choice and having them enter our classrooms, while also, you know, making sure that students are getting the, the attention that they need from their classroom teachers. You know, if the trends continue with respect to, to our demographics, you know, I think that there is an economy of scale to a certain extent when you have, you know, more English learners, there's a bit of an economy of scale in terms of how many students a teacher may provide education to. That being said, we're seeing more and more students who are coming in with interrupted learning. We're seeing more students coming in at beginner, at level-one language proficiencies, including at our high school level. And we did just ask the School Committee to approve an additional English language development teacher at the high school. So I do anticipate, and Barnstable's not alone, I'm telling you this coming, you know, coming from off Cape and in another community that was also seeing an increase in English learners, also seeing an increase, not just in the numbers of students with disabilities. I think that that bar graph is a little misleading in terms of the, the percent of students with disabilities remaining relatively stable, but the intensity of the needs increasing. And we actually send very few students, kind of comparatively out of district. We have some really strong programs within our own school community, but each of those programs, like the NECC program for students with autism and the intensive learning centers requires a port considerable additional teaching support. And again, that's a trend that's being seen, not only here in Barnstable, but across the state of Massachusetts and, and the country. So I do anticipate that that would continue to increase. And the other area that I would continue to see needs increasing is around student mental health. We knew that there was a mental health crisis prior to the pandemic with an increased number of students presenting with anxiety and depression, most of which, which was going untreated. And then the pandemic happened, and we have certainly seen an increase there. So, so I do think that, and most of what we do is personnel-driven and personnel-dependent. I do continue to forecast some increased needs, but would impress upon you how carefully we look at enrollment, how carefully we look at class size, and try to make sure that we're running efficiently in that regard while also meeting student needs.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I just, I kind of throw that out there just because I just, you know, in seeing the increased costs and the public watching the meeting that, you know, obviously you're on top of things, you're addressing these needs, there is a need, especially with our English as a second language. And as we've discussed, that this is, it's, it's an opportunity in a lot of ways to educate these kids, show how excellent our school system is. And, and like you said, utilize the resources, though limited, that we have. So Vice President Schnep, you had your hand up, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all the presenters tonight. I'd like to just pursue a little bit more questioning on the facilities assessment that you spoke about. And the, the need to already have additional trailers to provide learning opportunities at, at our existing schools. Knowing that we mothballed the number of our elementary schools, not, well, actually quite a while ago now, but we still have a few schools left. Are there certain locations where you see the expansion of facilities to be more critical? And do you also envision the need to upgrade some of our existing schools that they're not meeting the needs of our children and faculty going forward?
Sure. So it's, I wouldn't say early in my entry process, but I have been actively engaged in an entry process, as you know, to kind of get the lay of the land and understand where some of the needs are. And in, in walking through the buildings, talking with principals, talking with elected officials, including school committee members and town councilors. You know, I do recognize and want to, I guess, reflect that I'm listening and hearing regarding your attention and concerns related to facilities, whether they be the physical plant or, or the grounds. I think the facilities conditions assessment is going to give us some of those answers, Councilor Schnep, that you're wondering about and kind of helping to highlight and prioritize some of the needs. You know, the facilities director just presented, you know, kind of a lookout to the School Committee related to capital improvement projects and is on top of those for, you know, both this coming round as well as what we might anticipate in the future. The portables are slated for Hyannis West and BCIS. So I think that if I had to immediately say where, you know, where that need might be identified, you know, that's, those are the two, two of the schools that are kind of experiencing some of those pressures. But we had, we have a pretty big kindergarten class at Barnstable, what's Barnstable. We have some growing intensive learning center classrooms at Centerville and students in those, in those classrooms require more space than a typical classroom would in terms of the number of students that you would have in a, in a location. The high school is certainly feeling a pinch, particularly as we think about some of the programs that we might want to introduce or expand to. A recent conversation that the School Committee has been thinking about is a junior ROTC program that requires two classrooms, an office, and some storage. And one of our wonders, you know, is just how tight the space might be in order to accommodate that based on what our curriculum goals would be. So it's pretty, it's actually pretty widespread, I think, in terms of, in terms of the space. And in terms of maintenance, too, many of the schools are roughly from the same era. And so there are some things that need attention being paid to, whether it's windows or paving. We have two schools that have some aging septic systems that we need to be sure that we're keeping tabs on. And then the grounds as well is something that, so it's, there are, there are some facility needs that are, I think, widespread, but the facilities conditions assessment will, I think, assist the committee in identifying what some priority areas would be going forward.
Just a follow-up. And when do you anticipate that that assessment will be complete?
I don't have an exact date. Gareth may know a little bit more about that projection, but I know that it's taking the better part of this school year to be undertaken, but I don't know the exact end date of that.
Yeah, I believe the original timeline had us wrapping up the, they've, they've done the field work. They're still interviewing some of the stakeholders. I believe the original timeline was around January or February. But I do know that there were some delays there, so we're probably kind of looking at early spring to see an initial report.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? I do have another item of discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Council Leckie, please.
I just wanted to say, I guess, something complimentary, that I have four kids in the Barnstable Public Schools. And I can echo what was been said in the briefings. I know my, my two youngest are in fourth grade and they came through the Innovation School. And they would tell me, you know, they'd come home and say, well, a new kid arrived today and they don't speak any English. And it was beautiful. They folded them right into the class, did an amazing job. It's, it's so beautiful. I mean, it really is nicely done with such a high population of English as a second language. And their teacher this year in fourth grade is outstanding. I had some problems early on in the first week. The counselor worked with that and, and resolved everything. My seventh grader is, is very happy. Most of her friends are from Brazilian families. And I just think it's, it's amazing. I know there's challenges, but I'm a firm believer in, in public education. It's, it's the bedrock of any community is having a public school system. I have friends that I know who've pulled their children out for whatever reason. But I'm steadfast to stay in the public schools. And I think we're doing an amazing job and we'll tackle the, the challenges that are there. And just a hello to Andre King. I remember watching you on Zoom. You had my son in eighth grade. And that was during the Zoom time. And there's an amazing teacher right there is, is Andre King. It was incredible listening to some of your lectures and the way you had your kids participate. So thank you so much. So really good things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Leckie. So the, I guess, my question, I, again, I think it's important for this to be part of it, is that, I think it was on slide 34, not that you necessarily have to bring it up, but that basically the inequality, equality to the budget for operationally for the town and operationally for the school at like about $89 million. And that is, as you said, presuming we get a debt exclusion, correct? So what happens if we don't get the debt exclusion?
If, if we go forward with those projects for the comprehensive wastewater management plan, and we don't have a debt exclusion or fund for it, then we have to reprogram existing property tax dollars to that area and take it from someplace else.
Right. So with that, we are having more discussion in regards to financing and how we are going to finance the CWMP moving forward. And those discussions are going to happen, you know. We're probably going to have something by the end of the year, just to let you know, because we know that it's a, it can be considered a looming threat. The fact that we, we do need to do this comprehensive wastewater management plan, we have an update later in the meeting from Director DPW, Dan Santos. And I just think it's important to know that we need sources of funding to save our water system, basically. So, and we're going to be required to do that with more regulations coming down from the DEP. And I foresee some sort of draft regulations, if you're not familiar with that. You know, the things that are coming down from the DEP in regards to watershed permits, innovative, innovative alternative septic systems, sewer, things of that nature. These discussions are going to be continuing throughout the month of November, through the beginning of December. And they're hoping to have some sort of draft approved by January, sometime, sometime in January. So with that, that will directly affect us as a municipality moving forward in how we expend our, in move forward with our CWMP and what that's going to impact. So there's lots of things coming up financially. Good news is, we do have growth dollars. There's things that we're doing moving forward. As Director Millen and Assistant Director Gareth Markwell mentioned, that, so there is good news on the horizons, there are options. As Council Leckie said, in regards to a residential exemption, there's other things to discuss as well, but, and we will have those discussions. I guess I'm saying all that to say, we will have these discussions and the possibility of a debt exclusion needs to be considered as well. So that all being said, I just, I appreciate you all being here and I, I did want to ask Finance Director Millen, if you had any comment, any more comment. Again, thank you for your presentation. Or Town Manager Els as well, if you're very knowledgeable, is there anything you'd like to comment on either as well?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So, but thank you for being here. Thanks for all your hard work, too. You know, you, you serve in a volunteer, very valuable sort of volunteer position. And I know the, the hard work that you all put in and your backgrounds in applying that to the benefit of our, our children. So I appreciate that. I also have a child in the school system. I have had children move on from the school system with great success, so I appreciate all that you do. Thank you. And have, enjoy the rest of your evening. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Do you want me to just close out our School Committee meeting?
Yes, please, if you could.
All right, can I get a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's yes, passes unanimously. I want to take an opportunity to thank all School Committee, all Town Councilors for letting us come. I always find this is a very, it's just interesting. It's interesting to get, even though it's my, what, seventh? It's interesting to get, even though it's my, what, seventh year mark, it's still like fresh and it's still new and I, I speak for all the other school committee members in saying thank you for, to all of you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Have a great night. Thanks for being with us. And with that, it's almost nine o'clock. I just want to be sensitive to time and the ability for our councils to, to take a break. So at this point in time, let's take a five minute break, please. And with that, it's almost nine o'clock. I just want to be sensitive to time and the ability for our councils to, to take a break. So at this point in time, let's take a five minute break, please.
Good evening and thank you, Markells, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager update for October 7th through October 20th. We'll start this evening with Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, and she'll provide an introduction to the proposed downtown Hyannis zoning revision. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Town Manager Els, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Again, here to provide an introduction to the zoning revisions that are being proposed to the growth incentive zone in downtown Hyannis. I want to thank council leadership for providing the opportunity to reintroduce this item to the councilors and to the public prior to the public hearing on these items on November 3rd. A brief presentation, I'm just going to share my screen. Thank you so much.
I can see it.
Fantastic. So the purpose of this project is to continue to promote mixed use and multifamily development in the downtown Hyannis area while at the same time protecting its historic and maritime character and improving the urban fabric of downtown Hyannis in a manner consistent with its historic character and traditional development patterns. Tonight, for this reintroduction, I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the plans and planning principles that provide the foundation of this effort. I'm going to talk a little bit about the approach to housing production that it represents and I'll give a brief overview of the three town council items that are against schedules So this effort is an implementation of a number, is an implementation of the priority actions that are in a number of plans that have been adopted by the town council and supported by expensive public comment. Those include the 2018 Downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone Strategic Plan, our 2016 Housing Production Plan and our prior local comprehensive plans. This, these zoning changes represent the opportunity to put the recommended actions in our plans into effect. So it's putting, putting our planning into action. The proposal also achieves a number of the objectives in the Town Council Strategic Plan. There are a number of places in the Town Council Strategic Plan that talk about encouraging redevelopment of underperforming parcels, redevelopment of underutilized or blighted properties. And as I'll talk tonight, that is one of the key objectives of, of the zoning changes. The Town Council Strategic Plan also talks to environmental protection and emphasizing that while also balancing economic development as articulated in the Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan and again, as in reinforced in our local planning documents. The Strategic Plan also talks about providing efficient, customer-friendly, predictable regulatory processes here in Barnstable. I will note that the, the former Town Council Zoning and Regulatory Subcommittee was, was read into this effort and it was also seen when we began this as a core economic development priority. So the study area for the zoning changes is the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. The Government Incentive Zone, for perhaps some folks who are not familiar, was the core, sort of the core of the town's smart growth strategy that we put in place with our plan, our local comprehensive planning, starting in 2006. And this, so this effort seeks the further, not just the objectives of the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, but that townwide land use and growth framework that it represents. The Growth Incentive Zone, its core mission is to direct new investment and new growth into areas with existing public infrastructure and concentrated community activity and away from areas of town where there are open spaces and, and areas with critical natural resource value. I think it's also important to point out that when we adopted the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone in 2006, when we reauthorized it in 2018, it's not just a regulatory designation. The Growth Incentive Zone is a commitment to downtown revitalization and accommodating new growth through long-term iterative planning and public investment in infrastructure, transportation, open spaces, affordable housing and community services, all the things that come together to make up a sustainable community. And so downtown Hyannis has today, and I think has, continues to have the opportunity to be in the future, one of Cape Cod's great walkable urban places. And those, those great walkable places come through the combination of encouraging compact development and concentrated community activity. And there are many secondary benefits to creating these, these types of places in communities. Allowing for smaller units, multifamily housing and right-sized parking promotes more housing affordability. This type of development, again, builds on areas that are already existing and consumes less land. There are also, again, a number of benefits of, of living in and developing in a walkable urban environment. Reduced auto dependency, reduced vehicle miles traveled, reduction in emissions when you walk daily, when you, when you find opportunities to walk, it promotes public health and it creates a more connected community. And that's, I think, why we show when we look at real estate trends and resident preferences nationwide, you find people who are drawn to walkable urban places. People want to be able to live where they can walk and get a cup of coffee and go to the library. There's, there's a quality of life that's provided in walkable, in walkable communities. So again, from the economic development perspective, encouraging housing in downtown is a revitalization strategy. When you add housing to places when there are already, where there are already businesses, you have new residents that are, that are coming in to support local businesses and to support those institutions. But we know it can be more difficult and it can be more challenging to invest in redevelopment and infill opportunities. And that's why, you know, that's why the Growth Incentive Zone came forward in the first place, to provide a streamlined permitting process as an incentive for owners to invest. That is, the incentive in Growth Incentive Zone really is the streamlining of the permit process, primarily through the elimination of review by the Cape Cod Commission. But it's important to think about the local regulations that stand in its place. Of the housing units that are built or under construction in the Growth Incentive Zone in the last five years, over half of those have required permitting through the regulatory agreement process. Our current zoning has a unit per acre metric approach. You can build this many units per acre and that metric has had the unintended consequence of deterring housing production in downtown Hyannis and especially housing production in the types and forms that, that we want to encourage and we feel are most appropriate. Also that when it comes to this units per acre metric, we've already moved away from that when the town council amended the highway business zone in Hyannis and Centerville. It eliminated that, that units per acre metric approach to zoning. But again, I want to, you know, I talked about again, sort of promoting growth and economic development, but I want to come back to the purpose because it is twofold. It's not just promoting mixed use and multifamily housing, but it's doing so in a manner that protects our historic and maritime character. And I'll note that Hyannis Main Street already has a local 40C historic district, the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District. This is one of the most This is one of the most powerful and effective tools that planners in Massachusetts have to be able to protect historic resources. But before we even started this process of rethinking zoning in downtown Hyannis, we really wanted to answer the question, how do we address the need for additional housing in our community while also respecting and promoting that character? And we engaged in a process, a planning process, and a public engagement process with the Cape Cod Commission. It's called Community Resilience by Design. And it gave us a framework for thinking about how we can add housing to downtown, but do so in a way that respects the patterns and the neighborhoods that are there. And these are some of the strategies that it identified, retrofitting existing structures. So this is that top-of-the-shop housing that we're already talking about, infilling and redeveloping underutilized property. Again, a key priority that's been identified in the town, and redeveloping those underutilized properties. Which brings us to the three items that, that are before the council and November 3rd. The first one is an amendment, both a amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance and the map of the zoning ordinance that would rewrite all of the zoning that's in the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. So I'm gonna, I'll touch on that one first. Again, it presents seven new zoning districts in downtown Hyannis. The, the core districts that you see here in purple are the ones that we have been referring to as our form-based code districts. Those are the ones that I would consider the most new and reimagined, again, where we took a new approach to supporting, supporting housing and mixed-use development downtown. The others are largely reflective of the zoning districts that are in place today at the harbor, along the Route 28 corridor, around our transportation center. They were modified, but don't necessarily incorporate some of the, the form-based provisions that you see in the purple districts. So those districts, the downtown Main Street, downtown Main Street District and the downtown Village District. The focus really is, again, encouraging new development through the addition of new dimensional standards that thinks about not just what we're building, but how we're building it and how it relates to the public street. So it includes a, a number of fully illustrated standards that go beyond just the typical sort of setbacks, your front yard setback, your side yard setback, that so many of us are familiar with. And really think about how those, how the buildings are gonna interact with the street, because that's what gives the, the look and feel of a, of a place. Its character is, again, that, that having those buildings pushed closer to the street and having that, that parking pushed behind it. So again, that's, that's where the, the, I guess, the, the nickname of this project comes from. The Form-Based Code is the inclusion of these additional dimensional standards in these four districts. Again, looking at new primary and secondary setbacks, looking at building form and how it's built and building features, and also relaxing some of the standards that we have in our code today, including the option to do a four-story with a recess setback in order to minimize visual appearance from the street. And so while we call these, and so while we have been calling this zoning change in these districts a form-based code, it still regulates use very conventionally. And this time in a comprehensive use table, where a user of the zoning ordinance at a glance can take a look at all of the districts that are present and all of the uses that are permitted and not permitted in that district. So one of the changes that you'll see here compared to within our code today is we have consolidated a number of those use categories. So I'll just take personal services for an example. Instead of trying to think up all of the different kinds of personal services, whether it's a hair salon or a nail salon or a yoga studio or a Pilates studio, which can be very hard to, of course, and very hard for people to interpret. We've, we've consolidated those categories and again, laid them out in a clear table. The other thing that we, we spent time on and emphasized were parking requirements in the district. There's a strong emphasis on shared parking between uses that have different peak hours. So for example, a retail use that might have a peak during the daytime that shares parking with a residential use that might have a more intensive parking need at night. This, this code recognizes and gives credit for those, those mixed uses that share parking. There's also added flexibility with the addition of special permit relief that not goes to the planning board for circumstances that may allow for parking reduction. Again, we see a reduction, a recommendation for a reduction for new residential units to have a one parking space per unit minimum. And I'll note that's a minimum. We see a lot of communities going to parking maximum, maximums, but we know parking is still very important in our community. And again, defining different types of parking uses, whether it's a primary use or an accessory use and different forms of parking. So the second item, 2022-145, is an amendment to the sign regulations. When we changed all of the district names and we changed the districts, it no longer matched up with the sign code that regulates signage. So 2022-145 is an amendment to the sign code for consistency with the proposed new district regulations. And finally, the last item, 2022-146, is really an administrative item to address the recreational marijuana standards that are in the Growth Incentive Zone today. They maintain the current location where recreational marijuana uses are allowed. They maintain the current regulations that are in place. But what they do is, those regulations are dependent on existing zoning districts and existing boundaries. So we're taking those regulations and we're essentially lifting them up into their own standalone overlay district. This has some benefits in terms of consistency regarding how this use is regulated in our code. We're also proposing to do some cleanup to repeal expired moratoriums related to these items. So that concludes my presentation. Again, I want to thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to reintroduce this to the council. I will just note before I close in terms of process, just to recap, SAK did start working on this a number of years ago. We did not do it by ourselves. We have some fantastic consultants on board that helped us through this effort, the planning and architecture firm UTEAL and the zoning expert Dan Hartman. We took this to a number of public meetings before we took it into the formal regulatory process and got a lot of public comments on our drafts before we finalized them. This was originally presented to the town council at a first reading on March 17th. It did receive a unanimous recommendation from the planning board on April 11th. And again, we have public hearings that are being advertised for November 3rd. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Appreciate the presentation. And we've already had a first reading on this item. So we didn't have any discussion. We had this explanation at that point in time. That was a few months ago. And obviously, we're going to do the second reading with a public hearing at the next meeting. But with that being said, if, if there are any questions for Director Jenkins, I also wanted to recognize, I believe I saw Assistant Director Kate Maldonado here as well, so I appreciate you being here. But with that, Council Mendez, you have your hand up, please.
Mr. President, before, before you get into discussion, I think several of the counselors need to recuse themselves from this item.
Oh, okay.
Even though I understand there's no vote, it's still
Understood.
accusations are still in order.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
I believe I'm one of, I believe I'm one of them, right?
Yes, you are.
I am recusing myself.
I believe I'm also one.
Yes.
I am recusing myself.
Thank you.
I as well, Mr. President, I'm recusing myself.
Thank you, Councilor Brusetti. We have one more.
Councilman Eri.
I was not aware, okay. I, I'm accusing myself.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that turnover. With that, back to Council Mendez, please.
Yeah, not really a question, just more of a comment. I just wanted to congratulate the staff. I think that, Elizabeth and the staff, I should say, I think it's a great plan. The concept is excellent. Being a lifetime resident, my family has long roots here. I think it's, it matches the character perfectly and not only that, but the forward thinking. It's modern. I think it's gonna lure people here and I think people will be, are gonna absolutely love it. So I just want to congratulate them. I think it's a great concept.
Thank you, Council Mendez. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much. For the benefit of the public, will this presentation, PowerPoint presentation be available?
If I may, yes ma'am. It will go to Director Plant for posting on the town council.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the counselors regarding to this? Council Lucky, please.
Sorry, thank you for the presentation. I have a question. You had said that you intentionally did not carry the form-based zoning into the other areas. You kept on that spine kind of in the, the center of town. And I think we could benefit from it further out and keep also with that question is now all the restrictions, like I noticed, commercial parking is not allowed in a lot of the areas. And I think that, that could be a problem. I know you're trying to decrease parking, but commercial parking is, is critical. I know, you know, when you visit Provincetown, without those commercial lots, the whole thing falls apart. And I know we have our lots out in the back there on North Street, which to me seems like a bit of a waste of space. And then all the Steamship Authority lots that, you know, frankly, parking garages could do a world to give us some more space to, to build the kind of facilities we need. So I'm just, I'm just questioning why the form-based piece didn't go further.
If I may, President Levesque.
Please.
I, I would be happy to speak to that. So we do refer to the other districts as hybrid districts. Some of them do have slightly modified dimensional standards. You know, I, I guess first just thinking about the Harbor District and, you know, recently, as a result of development proposals there, we have been thinking a lot about the Harbor District zoning and what heights might be appropriate relative to the water, relative to the geography and, and the coastal resiliency impacts of that site. It was my recommendation that we needed to do further study in and around the waterfront to be able to support a more comprehensive zoning revision there that really took all of those things into account. You know, I firmly believe that, that good zoning comes from good planning. And I think there was some, some data and some questions there that weren't entirely answered. So there we, you know, there we, we largely maintained what we had. We did certainly in places like along Route 28, make sure that we had enhanced standards relative to things like landscape buffers and the location of parking and buildings to the street. Again, so, so we're encouraging visual character. And I will note that a companion project to this item will be an effort to update the design guidelines that apply in downtown Hyannis as well, to again, have further input and, and, and control over the look and feel of buildings. When it comes to commercial parking, that is, is, you know, a very complicated land use in downtown Hyannis. And one that we've spent a lot of time in this community thinking about studying and balancing, especially its impact on the waterfront. You know, we really have two different parking ecosystems in downtown Hyannis. You know, we have one that supports our main street, supports our residents, supports our businesses. And then we have one that, that really acts as a, acts as a, a landing place for the ferry, you know. In many ways, Hyannis is a parking lot for Nantucket. And we have to be really careful about how we think about regulating parking in our community. It's an important economic driver, but at the same time, if not coupled with the right type of zoning regulation, it's one that, you know, there, there tends to be an incredible demand for it. So we really have to think about how it's appropriately located, appropriately regulated, because we want to encourage, we want to encourage as much private investment and quality private investment in our lots downtown, but also recognize that we need to make room for this important land use that supports the regional transportation services that we have here. So we've tried to find that balance. You know, there's a big difference between sort of commercial parking and accessory parking and public parking. So that's what, when I say that we, we really try to put parking into those different buckets and zoning through how we define it, that's what I mean, is that, you know, a parking for the ferry is treated very differently than parking that supports a business or our public parking lots that support visitors and tourists onto Hyannis Main Street. And certainly, when we get into it at the public hearing, we can dig deeper into some of those definitions and tables if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you for that. I just, I'm, I'm a huge fan of form-based zoning. But it just seems like we're putting a lot of handicaps on it by putting like that, that chart that you showed with all the, because form-based, the beauty of it is it is form-based and the uses are in there and it's a mixture. And we're still keeping a lot of that, you know, old thinking in this process. So it'd be interesting to see how that goes, if there's a chance to, to look at this again, to be probably maybe, I don't know, more inclusive with it and have greater success throughout the entire district. That's it.
Definitely like your thinking, Council Lucky. I think, I think what we're trying to do here is just introduce, is actually a very new concept for the town of Barnstable and and I, I think it's good to, to take a quite, you know, a cautionary step forward in a way, but at the same time, it's a large step forward. So any other questions? Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And, and again, you know, appreciate all your hard work in regards to this. And quite honestly, all your hard work and then your patience to try to move forward with this. And, and I know there's also a lot of people watching, you know, a lot of people that would possibly benefit from something like this that were, you know, are interested to see what the outcome's gonna be moving forward. So I appreciate you accelerating it as the opportunity arose to get it done.
Thank you again so much, President Levesque. Thank you to Councilor Mendez for his kind words and for allowing me to make this reintroduction.
Yes, absolutely. Again, thanks, thank you staff for us, please. Okay, let's continue on with Town Manager Communications, please. Town Manager Els.
Thank you, Markell's Town Manager. We're proceeding with the budget action calendar for FY '24. The action items in the budget calendar included the meeting, joint meeting we've just had between our town council and our school committee in the development of proceeding, the development for FY '24 proposed operating budget. That PowerPoint presentation, as Mark Millen has said and Councilor Clark has inquired, is available on the town website. The town manager and the superintendent have met and agreed to proceed with the 60-40 split as in past years for the proposed FY '24 operating budget. I, I will pause for a second because it was a really good question about how our, how the respective operating budgets percentage-wise align, quantify at 63, 37%. If that's what, I think that's about what that pie, pie chart showed. But that really isn't what we're talking about with the 60-40 split. The 60-40 split, we're talking about growth dollars and how in the preparation of respective operating budgets, we apportion those growth dollars to the school department and the municipal government. This is really a control mechanism so that in any given year, our finance director can say to schools, as he illustrated tonight in one of his charts, okay, this is what we anticipate, three plus million for the schools, you know, two, just under three for the municipal. And then we take our base plus that and we plan for what we're bringing in within those constraints for the next proposed operating budget. So sometimes I think there's a little confusion as to that sixty forty being, well, the schools is sixty percent and the town's forty percent of that operating budget. That is not what sixty forty split is. And certainly, if you want to have a deeper discussion at any time, Director Melon's always available to 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 step us through that so that we all understand exactly what it is from my perspective as your town manager. This is a financial control mechanism so we know exactly where our schools and where our municipal will come in with their proposed budget. Thank you. We plan to hold the calendar year town manager fee hearing on November fifteenth. I'm still waiting on the exact time and and place, whether it'll be in person or or Zoom. That'll be established certainly by your next council meeting so we can make the announcement, but there'll also be a you know, a press release on that and a posting of that so that everybody will know well in advance. And all this information is is will be and is available on our website. On July twenty six, twenty twenty two, I provided the Board of Health an update regarding the proposed regulatory changes under consideration by the Department of Environmental Protection to Title V. As previously reported on June first, the town of Barnstable was informed of regulatory revisions. The DEP is developing to ensure the timely action they're taking to restore and protect those delectuaries that have been impacted by excessive nitrogen pollution. We met with the DEP on July sixth to further discuss these proposed changes and submitted a letter summarizing our comments on the proposed changes for DEP's consideration as they finalize their draft regulation. We met again with staff on September twenty third to further discuss the proposed changes to the regulation. Been in communication with DEP regarding a potential draft regulation hearing at Barnstable Town Hall in November. It sounds like as of late this afternoon, it might fall in December, but no dates yet. We'll actually be trying to do it here for for this area. And we're waiting to hear a response back from DEP. I've also requested the DEP present the draft changes at a joint meeting of the town council and Barnstable Board of Health as these are significant changes and merit such a workshop. With 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 our town council, I was looking at maybe the first meeting in December, but after this afternoon's call, I think it may fall a little bit after that. But I I've made that request of, you know, the Southeast Regional Director and I'm waiting to hear if that's something that she will be able to attend and then I'll go to our leadership and hopefully we'll be able to accommodate that. These are significant changes. And I I I think that it merits that sort of discussion with certainly our town council and our Board of Health. I'll keep you advised as this progresses. We continue review of permits filed with regulatory agencies regarding the proposed Phase Three Commonwealth Wind landing of cable in Barnstable. As presented on March seventeenth, the proposed landing location for cable in Osterville, you know, that was shared by Commonwealth Wind with our town council. Commonwealth Wind shared the information following their filing for site assessment approval with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management that identified their proposed project, including that landing and cable route locations. To date, I've only had general discussions with Commonwealth Wind as recent as today. And their project representatives regarding this Phase Three but have not commenced negotiations for a host community agreement and shall not do so until authorized by town council. I can tell you that they asked again today. My recommendation does not change. It is that we that that we bring a resolve to town council authorizing the manager to proceed with these discussions. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, Commonwealth Wind proceeded with filing their environmental notification form and supporting documents to the Mass Environmental Protection Agency Office, MIPA, it's referred to. And I provide the document link below for everybody to look at. Commonwealth and we are reviewing this. Staff is reviewing it along with myself. Commonwealth Wind anticipates that the public comment period for the ENF will extend now through November twenty ninth. When I reported last time, they they had they had it as October twenty seven. And so I've provided you the link to that MIPA site so that you can see that MIPA has recognized Commonwealth Wind asking for that extension. And it it's it's stated right in there as as November twenty nine. Staffs reviewing the ENF and plan to submit comments within the public comment period. There's that attachment D that's in there. I'd encourage everybody to look at if you have the time to do it because it really lays out all the different permits, starting with 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 the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management filing and taking it right through ultimate permitting and what they believe their schedule will be. I've said numerous times, but again, they don't need to come to us and and ask our permission to proceed with this project. They can proceed with these permits. We do anticipate them going before the Energy Facility Siting Board sometime in the near future, before the end of the calendar year. And I've also had discussions today with Commonwealth Wind that they will be in discussions with the Department of Public Utilities regarding rate modifications given recent changes in energy costs. That's about all the information I have on that. I'm sure as they enter into those discussions, we'll have access to more information as will the public. When I when I have it, I'll share it with you and and the public in these updates. And we'll keep you informed as this progresses. Sandy Neck Beach, I'm sorry, Sandy Neck Beach Park Facility is an important town asset which experiences over a hundred fifty thousand visitors annually to the beach, the off-road vehicle beach, trails, campsites, cottages and hiking. It's also a designated area of critical environmental concern, providing habitat for multiple threatened and endangered species. Coastal storms have resulted in flooding of the gatehouse and coastal erosion has threatened the trails and parking lots multiple times. The town council has previously approved emergency appropriations to nourish the dune, protecting the parking lot and repair damaged facilities. Recognizing the need for long term management of this site, the town council approved capital improvement projects in twenty twenty and twenty twenty two for the purposes of designing and permitting solutions to address coastal storm impacts at Sandy Neck Beach Park Facility Parking Lot, Gate House and ORV Trail. Since then, Department of Public Works and Marine and Environmental Affairs staff have been working with the Woods Hole Group to develop and evaluate different coastal resiliency alternatives for consideration. The project team recently applied for and received a coastal resiliency grant from the Mass Coastal Zone Management Office to fund preliminary design, which was accepted by the town council earlier this month. The project team is actively working with the Sandy Neck Board, Mass Coastal Zone Management Office and other regulatory agencies to assess multiple offers, multiple alternatives and plan to bring forward recommended alternatives to manage this facility. We anticipate scheduling public presentations to review the project results and discuss the recommended management alternatives for this site. We've requested a workshop with town council in November to review and discuss these alternatives. And we'll keep you advised, you know, as as we progress with this. And Director Santos is going to follow me. So if you have questions about this specific item, I'll try to answer them, but he may be more appropriate to answer. And that concludes my my portion of the town manager update. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Town Manager Ellis. Any questions to Town Manager Ellis? Not seeing any. Town Manager Ellis, thank you very much for that presentation, all information. And moving on to Director Santos for the update in CWMP project.
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Councilors. For our regular update, it's going to be in two parts. I'm going to give you a brief presentation on the construction projects underway for the comprehensive wastewater management plan. And then, as we mentioned last month, we'll be taking on an additional issue from time to time to give you a little more information. And that is going to be on our estuary sampling program. And that'll be the second part of this presentation with a guest presenter. So I will share my screen right now. So we have three primary projects underway on the plan. And Strawberry Hill Road sewer expansion, Route twenty eighty sewer expansion and the Vineyard Wind construction. Obviously, that being done by Vineyard Wind and not the town, but we are certainly coordinating that and working closely with them. And you can see the large areas that are impacted by construction here in the yellow and magenta for this fall, the yellow being sewer work and the magenta being Vineyard Wind Duck Bank construction work primarily. On the Strawberry Hill Road project, which is scheduled for completion next spring, we put in of the sewer sixty five percent or almost seventeen thousand linear feet of the gravity sewer. That work is done on Craigville Beach Road. We put sewer in Craigville Beach Road. And you can see that in the lower part of the graphic in the in the green, the complete sewer is in the green. The orange is currently ongoing sewer work. And then the magenta here at the north on Finney's Lane is future sewer work. We're currently on Finney's Lane between Center Lane and Huckins Neck Road. As part of this project, putting in the duck bank and sewer, as you can imagine, there's quite a bit of utilities that's going to be installed in our roadways. And one of the things we had to do is relocate water mains to make room, but also because it's a good opportunity since we're in the road. Those are some old water mains there to replace them. And to do that, we have to install a bypass system. It's above ground. And we temporarily provide water through that system, take out the old water pipe, put in the new and then reconnect that to the system and then take out the bypass. It's a multi-step process. We've done it many times, works well, but bypass system is currently working and the water main is being installed on Finney's Lane currently. And then the station for this project, which is at five twenty eight Craigville Beach Road at the intersection of Strawberry Hill Road, we are, that construction is underway. The twenty eighty sewer project, the Finney's Lane pump station construction is underway. That's the intersection of Finney's Lane and with twenty eight. Massive construction project. If you drive by there, it's hard to miss. And we're putting in a very large pump station at this location which requires that it be a very deep excavation, as you can see here, forty feet down, well into the groundwater. So we actually have to separate out where where we're going to do the construction underground. We use steel sheet piling and we basically make a container that we can pump the water out of and keep the water out while we do the construction. So that's the work that's going on right now, starting in November. Depending when in November, depending on how the pump station work is going, we're going to be starting on Finney's Lane and installing sewers, working north on Finney's Lane. And then the other part of this project, you can see in the the graphic here, there's the pink sections with the magenta heading east and that work will start next spring. And the the project completion will be probably a year to fifteen months from now for all the sewer installation and the pump station completion. And then the Vineyard Wind work, that's on schedule for completion this coming spring. You can see here that on the graphic, the green is what's been completed. The orange is where they are working currently, which is primarily what we're seeing this week. And if you've been anywhere near one thirty two and Finney's Lane, they need to cross Route one thirty two and that work has been ongoing. In fact, they should finish that. If they hadn't today, they're going to finish and pave tomorrow, which will be good because that certainly caused some traffic issues. With all these projects, we're working very closely with the police department. We we meet with them weekly. We email them the plans daily. We work with the school department. We also work with the fire department to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on. We know this is can be trying and it's going to continue to be that way. But we appreciate everyone's patience, you know, a while to get our get our groove going on a lot of these issues. And I think we're we're over some of the the rough roads, no pun intended, from the start. And it's going well. But we do appreciate all the public's patience with this and and hope that will continue as well. Vineyard Wind work, the substation up Independence Park, that's going well. It's been by there. That's really risen from a tree lot and it looks like a substation now. So a lot of work's been done there. And then as far as repaving, they're going to be repaving disturbed roadways this fall, Craigville Beach Road, West Main Street, Independence Drive and Attix Lane. And in the spring, Strawberry Hill Road and next fall, Finney's Lane and Will Clocket Lane. Route twenty eight west sewer expansion, this is not under construction. We've just awarded the design contract to Weston and Sampson for this. This design will occur over the next two years. This will take our backbone from the Finney's Lane pump station all the way out to Route one forty nine. And this will allow us to go north and south and provide sewer into the later phases of Phase One into Phase Two and ultimately Phase Three. This is a major part of our infrastructure. And that work will be underway in construction in fiscal year twenty five and twenty six and completed by twenty seven. And Park City Wind coming ashore, Craigville Beach. They have not chosen, or at least made me aware that they've chosen their final route yet. There's been public meetings and discussions about what route they're going to take in and around Center Hill Village. When we know that, we'll let you know. I imagine they'll let you know first, but that decision's not yet been made. Our our design for the sewer part of this, we've awarded that contract to Stan Tech because like we did with Vineyard Wind, we want to be putting in the sewer and they're going to follow through with their duck bank in order to take advantage of the savings through the from restoring the road at the completion. Continue to meet with their staff regularly to understand what they're doing. There's going to be a number of pump stations, one significant one in the vicinity of Mother's Park, as we've talked about many times. We continue to work on the legal issues required to take care of easements there, to take care of discontinuance of that road with the county and a number of other issues. And that construction is anticipated to start about a year from now, based on Park City's schedule. And that construction is anticipated to start about a year from now, based on Park City's schedule. So that's my summary of the CWMP projects. And I'd be happy to take any questions on that aspect. And then, when we're through with that, let me stop sharing my screen. I'll introduce Amber for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Director Santos. Vice President Schnepp, did you have a hand up for a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Director Santos, for that update. Two questions. When you were showing the Vineyard Duck Bank that was going up and was orange and magenta, is any of that or is all of that also being concurrently sewered? Or are some of the Vineyard Wind courses not always concurrent with the sewer?
Well, we do the sewer first, and and then they follow with the duck bank. That's why we're ahead on Finney's Lane now, and then they're going to, they're following up behind us.
Okay, so that did help me understand it. And then the second, last month, we had some information that seemed to be a little bit of a revision of the responsibility for the sewer connections. And, you know, that originally that we had passed a sewer assessment ordinance where that that financing was going to be rolled up, but it seems like we're going more toward the homeowners being able to take advantage of other sources of financing for that. Are we are we at a point to discuss that, or should we defer that to another meeting when we're talking more about the financing?
Why don't I let Manager Ls address that question for you?
Okay, thank you.
Town Manager Ls, please.
Hello, Mark Ls, Town Manager. I I think we can touch upon that. It is in the sewer assessment. It is allowed as a financing option. There's three options in general for our residents. They can do it themselves. They can look at using the county program. Or they can look at rolling it into their assessment with the town. For us to exercise that, I'd really like to lay out a start to finish of what it will take for our resident to think about when they connect the sewer. And then have a discussion about what's best for our residents to consider. I think there's an assumption that, well, we'll just roll it in, and that's the way to go. Well, okay, but DBW will need to plan for that. And I think that's what Director Santos was really expressing when he said to you, it's not really that simple, especially when you have a complex property that's going to require you to replumb your house to be able to provide a sewer connection point in a way that is accessible and and, you know, and doable for us. The other thing people need to understand is when you exercise the sewer assessment option, right now, it looks as though, and this is part of what we're doing further investigation on, we would need to bid it and we would need to pay prevailing wages for it. Now, historically, the difference between someone hiring and us doing prevailing wage can be about thirty percent more for prevailing wages. So I think our residents are going to find it, you know, difficult to pay thirty percent more, which we do for every job that we bid because of the laws that pertain to us as a municipality. We're talking with the Attorney General's Office about that. On the flip side, there, if you if you've kind of followed what our state government was doing and was not successful yet in doing it, they were looking at directing about two hundred million dollars to Cape Cod, about half of it to municipalities for subsidies to these projects, and the other half to the county for for subsidizing and for continuing to offer that county loan program for innovative on sites and sewer connection. They're not subject to this, as best we can tell. So when Director Santos was providing that information, he was really saying, you know, the better option may be the county program from a financial standpoint to our residents. We need to be able to inform our residents of all three of these options. And in the case where the resident wants to have us bid it and roll those costs into the sewer assessment, that needs to be established in advance, and they need to be ready to approach it that way. So that's a long answer to kind of a simple question. Yes, it is an option for us. It is in the ordinance because it is an option for us. And it may very well be the best option for some of our residents. You're going to hear us over the next twelve months. We're going to develop this. We're going to have a a program for our residents. And in fact, we're bringing on, I don't think we brought them on yet, relevant to the person who's working between DBW and finance, relevant to these assessments, who's going to work directly with our public on this in combination with DBW, so that our residents can like sit down and completely understand the options and which way they believe is best for them, and then we will help them there forward because they're already our resident, and pretty soon they're going to be our sewer customer forever. And so we want that relationship to start out well and continue well. So did that answer your question?
Yeah, it it provides some clarification. I I'm just wondering the timing of, you know, we've got some sewer that's complete. I don't know when everything gets connected.
We don't have, we don't, we don't have sewer that's complete. We need to have this in place a year from now.
Year from now, okay.
So you're going to see all of us collectively working. And, you know, I I I think we need to be talking with our residents, you know, by first quarter of twenty-three actively. And so that by the time we get to next summer, they pretty much know what they're going to want to do, and we're preparing to assist them move forward with that as that opportunity to connect will occur.
Are we also in need of communicating with the Board of Health so that this is not, it does not appear to be a voluntary connection?
Yeah, we've been communicating with them for months. We have a weekly meeting set up, and so all that will be in place well in advance of when it's needed.
Great.
And and I think that's a really great question because I think we need to have this very specific conversation between Town Council and Board of Health and that everybody understand, including staff, certainly myself and Dan and others, and and then, you know, Director Florence and McKean. But this is going to be really critical because the modeling that Mark Milne's done for us anticipates people connecting within a reasonable time frame post post-completion of the sewer. And I was there at the table when the Town Council former asked the Board of Health to develop the regulations, or not really regulations, develop the procedure so that they could defer connect. So wasn't the Board of Health doing that? It was, it was, it was the council in response to the public asking to not have to connect right. I think we need to revisit all of that, and I know Director Santos is doing that with the Board of Health, but you need to be folded into this discussion. Because if they come up with a timeline that the public doesn't like, and they go to you with that concern, you need to be aware of exactly what we're doing. Because the Board of Health is the one with the authority to require them to connect. So we've got to have everybody communicating with each other, our public, our staff, our Board of Health and our council, so that this will be implemented as best as it can be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Manager Ls. Thanks for the explanation important for our residents, and we would definitely be having more discussions moving forward. Any other questions for Director Santos, Town Manager Ls, before Amber? Okay, back to you.
Okay, thank you.
For the introduction, please.
So I don't know if you've all met Amber, but so I'm pleased to introduce Amber Unruh. She is a senior project manager in the department. She's been with us a couple of years, and she is our subject matter, she's a water scientist and our subject matter expert on all things ponds and estuaries. And she's going to go through our estuary sampling program with you that's been in place for many, many years. So I'll turn it over to Amber. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dan, for the introduction, and good evening, President Leveque and members of the Town Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and be able to present the embayment monitoring program to you all. I'm going to share my screen now, and if someone can just confirm that they can see it.
Yep, we can.
Is it full screen for you?
Oh, the presentation's off to the side. Yeah, there we go.
Better?
Perfect, thank you.
All right, great. So as Director Santos mentioned, this is just an overview and an update of the Town of Barnstable's Embayment Monitoring Program. To get started, just generally, this is an annual monitoring program that, you know, the purpose is to go out and collect water quality samples and data at roughly seventy stations across all of the town's estuaries. This map to the right does not represent all seventy stations, just a select few, and I'll describe those in a minute. But this program was actually initiated back in two thousand and two as part of the Massachusetts Estuaries Project, which, at its inception, collected data for five years in the embainments, just water quality samples, watershed assessments, ecological assessments. And all of that data was put together to develop the nitrogen total maximum daily loads for each estuary. As part of developing those TMDLs, they also selected certain stations that were known are now known as the Sentinel Stations. And associated with each Sentinel Station is a nitrogen concentration that's representative of each estuary's total maximum daily load target. So essentially, as, you know, towns were to move forward with water quality sampling, measurement at these particular stations and monitoring of the total nitrogen concentration relative to meeting our total maximum daily load in each estuary was was going to provide a metric for us to understand if we were nearing or meeting our regulatory requirements for for nitrogen TMDLs. And so as I go through the presentation, you'll see several figures with these bright yellow stars throughout them. And another thing I would like to highlight about this program is that it's is a very collaborative effort. We have, you know, DPW staff, Marine Environmental Affairs staff, citizen volunteers, the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition staff and their volunteers, our neighboring towns staff and volunteers, as well as the School for Marine Science and Technology, all working together to execute this program. And so just to kind of dive in to a little bit of the field sampling component of this project. So in order to collect the samples throughout our estuaries, it takes roughly twenty-five to thirty samplers. And we divide these samplers up into approximately fifteen teams. And each team is responsible for anywhere from one to four water quality stations. And that's all based on, you know, essentially how long it might take a particular person to get to a station. As you can see in the picture here, some people are working in kayaks, news, or some are working in a boat that has a motor, so they can obviously get to certain stations faster. And it's it's variable depending on what estuary you're in, what station you're sampling, because we have certain estuaries that are very shallow, some are very deep. We also have land sites that certain stations can be sampled from the land. So, so, you know, there's a variety of sampling. But each, once we have our samplers recruited, we then conduct an annual refresher training for some or or first time training for new samplers to go over the sampling protocols associated with this program so that they understand how to use their sampling equipment while they're out there in the field. And so, for instance, this this picture in the top left, you can see we have coolers, and the coolers are bottles collecting water samples. We have kits. The kits are filled with various equipment that is necessary for collecting water samples and and data at each station. We have data sheets, sampling poles, and and all of that as as part of their the sampling program. And so once they're trained up, you know, and ready to to be deployed out into the field, they go out on a scheduled date and time, and these dates and times are specific to begin the protocols for sampling and making sure that the data set is terrible over all of these years. That sampling occurs early in the morning, usually around six AM on a mid ebbing tide, that's when the water's pulling out of the estuary approximately halfway through its tidal cycle. And it's also focused on the months between July and September. Each year, we do this on four different events during that timeframe. And when the samplers go out, they collect, in the field, they'll collect water clarity data using, you know, the circular black and white disc, which is lowered into the water. And and you can visually see when it disappears to record that data. They also have to use a dissolved oxygen temperature meter, which is pictured here in the sampler's hand in the top right, that that indicates the dissolved oxygen levels at that station in the estuary. And all of this is consistent with, you know, when the program started in two thousand and two. So data we're collecting in two thousand and twenty-two is directly comparable to the data collected at the beginning, the start of the whole program. So once those samplers go out early in the morning, they collect the samples and they bring them back to the DPW. We check them all in, and then we deliver them to the School for Marine Science and Technology, where they have an analytical facility to process all of these samples. They run various tests for, you know, nitrogen, phosphorus. They're looking at, you know, chlorophyll pigmentation in the water and salinity measurements are all conducted within the lab setting. And that data is then returned back to the town and compiled into what is now a pretty large data set. So over the course of one year, these four sampling events, our samplers are collecting approximately three hundred samples a year across all of our estuaries. And as you can imagine, over the last twenty-one years, we have a very large data set. So now I'd like to walk you through the data that we do have relative to our Sentinel Stations across these these embainments. So starting with Lewis Bay, in the figure on the left, you'll see we have, you know, the town, the watershed to Lewis Bay is outlined in blue. The Town of Barnstable component is shaded in white versus the Dharma component is shaded in dark gray. The town line is specifically delineated by this black dash line that runs through. As you can see, there are several yellow dots scattered out throughout the estuary. Those dots represent all of the sampling stations for Lewis Bay. The Sentinel Station is represented by the yellow star, which, as you can see, is located on the east side of Lewis Bay. This particular station represents, you know, just essentially where we're monitoring the nitrogen concentration, and if it's nearing that that TMDL target for us. So on the right, I have actually plotted every data point we have for this Sentinel Station in Lewis Bay. So each data point represents a a single sampling event. And as you can see with the black line, so the blue dots are each a sampling point, and the black line is a trend line of those sampling points. For the most part, over the last twenty years, Lewis Bay's total nitrogen concentration has remained relatively consistent over that timeframe. Relative to the TMD threshold, which is indicated by this red line, we are above our TMDL threshold. So obviously, you know, that kind of constitutes a need for reducing the nitrogen load to estuary. And then moving to a nearby location And then moving to a nearby location, so Stewart's Creek. This is actually not a Sentinel Station, but we do have a water quality station at the outlet of Stewart's Creek. In this figure here, you can see with the red line, this is the outline of the Stewart's Creek watershed. So that's what's contributing the nitrogen to Stewart's Creek. On the right, we have the data from this program, the nitrogen concentration over the years. What's interesting about Stewart's Creek is that we had very high nitrogen concentrations. This is, you know, relative to what we were seeing in Lewis Bay, which was around point five milligrams per liter. This is, you know, around point one five to two milligrams per liter. So it's quite a bit higher nitrogen concentration in those early years. And then we had a culvert widening project that occurred in November of two thousand and thirteen, and that dramatically reduced the nitrogen concentration coming out of Stewart's Creek. Also, in addition, back in, I think, roughly two thousand and eight, we performed the Stewart's Creek Sewer Expansion Project. And as the homes connected to that sewer system, it reduced the nitrogen load coming from that watershed. And as you can see, following the culvert widening, we've seen an overall decrease of the nitrogen concentration within Stewart's Creek over the years. And now we're starting to approach a point five milligram per liter nitrogen threshold. You don't see a TMD, a red line on this graph because Stewart's Creek does not have a TMDL. It's part of the Lewis Bay embayment, which means that it's relative to the Sentinel Station I described previously. Moving on to Centerville River and Halls Creek, these are two separate embainments. They each have their own unique watershed and water quality stations associated with them. If we, if we look at the data for the Centerville River, one thing that you can see again is that, over the years, we have several data points. But for the most part, that trend line is, you know, maintaining, you know, very flat line. There's not a lot of change. Nitrogen's not necessarily increasing or decreasing at the Sentinel Station within the Centerville River. Conversely, in Halls Creek, we have a total nitrogen concentration that is currently much lower than the TMDL target for this estuary. And that's just based on the fact that Halls Creek has assimilative capacity still for nitrogen. So it could essentially take up more nitrogen without being an impaired system or impacting the water quality within that embayment. So that's a good sign here. But additionally, you can see that that's a relatively consistent total nitrogen concentration over the last twenty years. In the Three Bays watershed, you know, the results aren't dramatically different from some of the other stations. But what we're seeing here is, you know, again, overall, this total nitrogen concentration is above our TMDL target. So there's a need for nitrogen reduction here. There does appear to be some maybe slight decrease in that total nitrogen concentration, you know, that might be due to some lower nitrogen levels seen in the most recent two years on this plot. But it doesn't necessarily show that we've achieved any type of nitrogen target here. We also have, you know, the Barnstable Harbor Great Marshes, which is currently not impaired to nitrogen. But nonetheless, as part of the MEP assessments, a TMDL nitrogen target threshold was set for certain stations in this embayment. And what I'm presenting here is actually two stations that are, you know, further up estuary, close to the edge of the Great Marsh. And you can see that the trend lines here are pretty close to the TMDL threshold line. One thing that's really important to note here is the scale is like a much smaller scale compared to the previous charts. So we're actually tracking very closely to that TMDL target. This figure on the right is actually only about point zero two to point zero three higher than that line. So it's actually, it's very close to what the threshold target is. And then finally, I wanted to go over Pompanesset Bay. This one's, looks a little different than the previous slides, and that's because Pompanesset Bay is shared with the town of Mashpee. And because of that, Mashpee actually conducts all of the sampling within Pompanesset Bay. So, you know, I took this information from one of the reports that they have, since I don't have the raw data for this one. So, again, there's a Sentinel Station located within Pompanesset Bay. And if you look at the data associated with that station that's outlined in this red box, you can see that whether it's the long-term average or these various three-year averages over the more recent years, all of those are above the TMDL threshold target of point three eight milligrams per liter. So again, you know, it's relatively high and there hasn't been a lot of change in that nitrogen concentration over the years. And so, you know, it's great that we have twenty years worth of data indicating that relatively consistent nitrogen levels occur throughout our days unless there's some kind of dramatic change in that watershed. But this, overall, this monitoring program provides a rich baseline data set for all of our estuaries and then provides us, you know, the ability to see improvements and track nitrogen improvements as we implement our comprehensive waste management. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Try to stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, Amber, for the presentation. Does anybody, and that's a really in-depth look of all the work that you do, that probably most people don't understand the scope of what you do, the research that in your team do on a daily basis. So I'm sure it was eye-opening, not only for councils, but for the public in general that are tuning in. Any questions for Amber? Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you. This is a lot of information with a lot of data. And will it be available for the public? And I'm asked this of Director Santos, just to... And is there a catalog on the DPW's webpage for all these presentations? Because that's helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. And yes, it will be available on the town's website.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you, President Leveque. So Amber, I was wondering, how did they set the TMDL target to zero point three eight? Is that just, is that going to be, was that historically where the water was? Or would that be biologically a good place to be?
So, thank you, Counselor Starr, for the question. One thing to point out is that each estuary is unique and what that nitrogen concentration is supposed to be in various estuaries. So some are point three eight, some are point three seven, one is one milligram per liter. It varies across each estuary and it's dependent on restoring the benthican fauna or macrofauna, like such as eelgrass, that historically existed in that embayment. And so, in the case of, you know, estuaries with the point three eight or point three seven milligram per liter estimate, that's really based on the ability to bring back eelgrass and shellfish and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. My other question would be, is there any, I know you're testing the water. Is anybody doing any surveys of the flora and fauna that live underwater? I mean, we all look at the water and it all looks the same every, you know, every day. But underwater, things have changed a whole lot.
Yeah, thank you. That's another great question. We do not perform any benthic surveys at this time. You know, given that we haven't seen any dramatic changes in our estuaries in terms of the nitrogen concentration at these stations, I wouldn't expect a huge change in the benthic and fauna that's living there. The only estuary that we actually have that data on is the Stewart's Creek Estuary, where following that culvert widening project, we did five years of post-monitoring. And we did see improvements in the benthic and fauna that lives within that estuary resulting from the water quality improvements associated with opening the culvert. So it's, that's the type of survey that we'd likely want to follow after seeing concentrations decrease and water quality improve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Anybody else? The hands up for a question for Amber. Okay, not seeing any. Thank you for being with us, Amber. And really, very informative and anything we can do to help you support the work that you do. And Director Santos, thank you for having Amber present tonight. So it was great. Very informative.
Thank you.
Have a great night. And thank you, Director Santos. I know we have a couple items coming up, so thank you for the presentation. And Town Manager Ells, I'm assuming that concludes the, your report, sir?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, now it is time for Council of Communications. From elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements.
We've got minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I turned the page too soon. Thank you, Vice President Starr. Could you help me with the minutes, please?
I sure can. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the town council meeting held on October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
We have first and a second. Is there any discussion, please? Okay, not seeing discussion. Town Clerk, Assistant Town Clerk, oh, there you are, Janet Murphy, for the roll call, please.
Thank you. Counselors, Axless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Karsetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you. Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Okay, now, moving on to the next item. Thank you, Vice President Starr, for that. Back to Communications, from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Anybody like to make an announcement? Okay, I actually have one. The Marson's Mills Historical Society welcomes all to the second Marson's Mills Historic House Tour. And it's this coming Saturday, October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. From ten AM to two PM, it's free, but donations are gratefully accepted. And it starts at the Community Church on Main Street. And again, it's ten to one thirty, and then you can return for refreshments. And the, it is requested that for the homeowners, that you wear a mask while in their home and for the houses. And also is a self-guided tour. But it's a number of places in Marson's Mills, six locations, the Community Church, the Hurst House, Burgess House and Barn, Fuller Farmstead, with the new barn there, and Marson's Mills Bearfield, the Luther Hamblin House, and the Isaac Crocker Farm. So it should be a good event, rain or shine. So anybody interested, please check out, it starts at the Community Church. Any other announcements? Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any. I would move on to the next item and I would invite Attorney Nobur to speak and give us a little explanation on this item.
Thank you, President Leveque. Good evening, counselors. Karen Nobur, Town Attorney. At the last town council meeting, you considered and voted on zoning amendment regarding the separation requirements for medical marijuana treatment facilities. There was a public hearing for that agenda item. The public hearing was required by state law and by town ordinance. After the meeting, we learned that there were, I think, two people who wanted to speak on that item at the public hearing who were not given that opportunity. And that happened because there was confusion on the part of town staff as to which item they were there to comment on. So as a result, I think the council should take steps to correct what happened by reconsidering the item and holding a new public hearing. That would require two votes. The first vote would waive the provisions of Town Council Rule Six F to allow a motion for reconsideration of item two oh two two one five nine to be made at this meeting. Rule Six F normally requires that a motion for reconsideration be made at the same meeting at which the vote was originally taken or that notice be given at that same meeting that such a motion will be made at the next meeting. Now, the council obviously can comply with that rule because we didn't learn what happened until after the meeting was over. So the second vote would then be to reconsider item two oh two two one five nine and re-advertise the public hearing on that item to be held on November seventeenth. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Anyone having questions for Attorney Nobur? Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to waive the provisions of Town Council Rule Six F to allow a motion for reconsideration of item number two zero two two dash one five nine to be made at this meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Assistant Town Clerk, Janet Murphy, for the roll call, please.
Counselors, Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Karsetti.
Yep, yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axless.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. Passes. Well, now I would entertain a motion to reconsider item number two zero two two dash one five nine and re-advertise a public hearing on that item to be held on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So move.
Second.
Your first and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Janet Murphy for the vote, please.
Counselors, Cuzak.
Yes.
Rap Karsetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our orders of the day. First item of old business. Let's see. Counselor Shaughnessy, if you could, please. Item number two zero two three dash zero three two.
Thank you, President Leveque. Item number twenty twenty-three dash zero three two. Old Business may be acted upon by roll call majority. Resolved, or appointments to a board committee, commission. Resolve that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multi-member board committee or commission. Housing Committee, Emily Cornett, as a regular member to a term expiring six twenty twenty-four. Waterways Committee, Gary Stramack, as a regular member to a term expiring six twenty twenty-five, as written.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Assistant Town Clerk, Janet Murphy, for the vote, please.
Counselors, Rap Karsetti.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Twelve yes.
Excellent. Counselor Axless, if you could, please. Next item of business, two zero two three dash zero three three.
Yes, Mr. President. This is Old Business, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero three three. Supplemental appropriation order in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the Barnstable Police Department Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-three operating budget for the purpose of funding a part-time police detail coordinator position. This is a public hearing, roll call majority of the full council.
Move a second.
Second.
First and a second. And we have Chief Sonnenbend, welcome, for this rationale, please.
Mr. President, good evening, members of the council. Good evening, Chief Sonnenbend, Barnstable Police Department. Item number two zero two three dash zero three three. We're requesting a supplemental appropriation order in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars be made to our fiscal year twenty- to the fiscal year 2023 operating budget for the purpose of funding a part-time detail coordinator. The department does about $5,000, $5,000 details, processes them a year and generating approximately $2,000, $2 million in gross annual revenue. The downside of processing all those details is that one of our traffic officers has to spend about four hours each day doing clerk-type duties, scheduling the details, putting them into the system, monitoring them, and taking care of all the paperwork that goes along with that, thereby removing that traffic officer off the road for those hours. What we propose to do is to hire a part-time civilian physician to work Monday through Friday between the hours of 12:30 p.m. and 4:30 p.m. for the purpose of processing those details and thereby freeing up that officer to go out and conduct other traffic-related duties, such as traffic enforcement, working on grants and things like that. The funding source for this would be that every detail that we process in the town, state law allows us to charge a 10% fee that goes back to the general fund. It doesn't come to the police department. It goes to the general fund. So every detail that we have, there's a 10% fee, and the town collects that and puts it into the general fund. We're proposing that this $19,350 be utilized from that 10% fee collection pulled out of the general fund and sent into the Barnstable Police Department general operating budget in order to cover this cost. And the fiscal impact is due to the increase in outside detail activity. The town has realized an increase in the administrative fee revenue, that 10%, which will more than offset the cost of this position. The fiscal year 2023 revenue estimated will be increased by a corresponding amount for the cost of this position, resulting in no corresponding budget reduction elsewhere.
Thank you for the rationale, Chief Sonnenbend. And this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody for public comment, please?
There's no public comment on this item.
And that would close the public hearing. Any council discussion, questions? Council Acelus, please.
I just want to make a quick comment. I mean, given the, at least in my precinct, I know some of my fellow councils also receive a lot of calls about speeding in their respective precincts and the need for more of the traffic division out there slowing folks down. Knowing that this will take somebody off a desk and put them back out on the roads instead of doing administrative work like this, I'm all for it. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Council Acelus. Council Star, you had your hand up earlier, please.
Yes, thank you, President Levek. I had a question. It says in the analysis, initially, the incumbent in this position will work Monday through Friday between 12:30 and 4:30. I'm not sure what that means. Is the person who's doing the job now is going to continue to do the job?
No, the
I don't
there is no one in this, the person in this position right now is a sworn police officer. That could be an error. But the person who was hired for this position
Okay.
would then work Monday through Friday between the hours of 12:30 and 4:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Star.
No, the position sounds very necessary at this point with all the construction.
Very, very.
Thank you, Council Star. Any other questions, comments? Not seeing any yet. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the vote, please.
Councillors, Levek.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Acelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Kuzak.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Have a great night. Moving on to our next item of business. Council Clark, please, if you could. Item Number 2023-034.
Thank you, President Levek. This is Agenda Item 2023-034. It's Old Business requiring a public hearing with roll call majority vote of the full council. This is an appropriation order in the amount of $15,000, which with such funds to be deposited into a dedicated account established for the purpose of acquiring property interests subject to the provisions of Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution.
Second.
Your first and a second. And we have Attorney Charlie McLaughlin for the rationale, please.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. This has a bit of a history to it. I'll try and be brief. In 2002, sewer and access agreements on the property at 725 Main Street in Hyannis were conveyed to the town. And simultaneously, the property at 725 Main was also conveyed to the town with those easements being recorded first. You'll know this property as the old Gulf Gas Station that was there for years and opposite the old MD Armstrong's property. The deed conveying the property provided that the grant of the property to the town was subject to the two easements that had just been recorded and also subject to restrictions set forth in the Land Bank Act, the Land Bank Program as we know it. The Land Bank Program provided the funding, provided the funding for the acquisition and requiring that the land may only be used for purposes outlined in the act. That is land to be retained in a natural scenic or open condition. Six years later, our office engaged with the Attorney General's Office on the potential use of this easement and access easement. And so in 2008, after consultation with the AG's office, the town negotiated and then recorded a declaration of restriction ratifying and confirming the restrictions on the property, including a declaration that the land was subject to the provisions of Article 97 of the Amendments to the Mass Constitution. And requiring the town, this is the, I think, the dub of the issue before us, requiring the town prior to exercising the rights granted by the sewer easement to place the appraised value of the easement into an account reserved by the town for the acquisition of property interest, subject to provisions of Article 97, i.e. open space purposes. We undertook a qualified appraisal this past summer, and as of July of this year, the appraisal came back and evaluation of $15,000 measured as of this time. This appropriation will fulfill the requirements of the Declaration of Restriction and will be deposited into a restricted account for the acquisition of property interest subject to provisions of Article 97 prior to any use of the sewer easement at 725 Main Street for sewer purposes. This project will provide for a new sewer pump that will be located on 725 Main Street and will replace and upgrade an existing sewer pump located across the street on the old MD Armstrong's property at 720 Main Street. And that 720 project was completed in 1972. As a result of the pump's age and at that site, the station is in poor condition and has reached the end of its useful life. It has also reached its pumping capacity. And a new and improved pump station with the sewer, on the sewer easement at 725 Main will address the capacity and condition of the 720 Main Street existing unit. It will also address the capacity restrictions of the South Street sewers by redirecting sewer flow from the intersection of South Street and C Street to the new pump station. There's no financial impact on this. The funds raised for the current year revenue will be generated by the Sewer Enterprise Fund and then transferred into a town-controlled account dedicated to the acquisition of property interests and subject to Article 97 of the State Constitution. A bit complicated, but fairly straightforward. At the end of the day, we had this easement branded to us with a lot of forethought in 2002. And the time has come to utilize it, and to do so, our agreement with to honor the intent of the Land Bank Program and so forth was very simply to make payment of a fair amount into a dedicated account for land preservation purposes and open space purposes. And so we ask for your support on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McLaughlin. And this is a
It's a public hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing. And is any public comment, please?
There's no public comment on this item.
Now I close the public hearing. Council discussion, please. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek, and thank you, Attorney McLaughlin for this explanation. And I understand this procedure. I'm wondering, when it comes to this $15,000, although it's not very much, the fiscal impact or financial impact says it'll be transferred to a town-controlled account. I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to apply that $15,000 towards the land bank debt because that was the origin of the of the expenditure.
I think I would suggest that everything's on the table at this point. I don't know that there's been a particular identification made at this point. We are also, recall a couple of weeks ago, with regard to the Park City project that we are also requiring, being required in the monitoring of Article 97 requirements to dedicate some funds that will be committed to, again, open space. And I'm sure that there'll be, there's no small need for the use of those funds and sure with consultation with the council, that there'd be a recommendation made that everyone can have input on at that time. Right now, I'm not aware of a particular project in mind, but I'm sure that will come forward in due course.
If I may. My point is that if the wallet that that money came from was the Land Bank Fund, shouldn't it go towards helping to retire that bond that we're continuing to carry? Perhaps Director Milne might have an answer for that.
If I could jump in, I think that the Declaration of the Declaration of Restriction requires that we use those funds to acquire open space. So I don't know that we could use it to retire debt. We would have to look at that further, but I don't know it would necessarily comply with the terms of the restriction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any more discussion. Assistant Town Clerk Janet Murphy for the vote, please.
Councillors, Ludke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Acelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Kuzak.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Neary, please. Item Number 2023-035. Yeah, let's see where we're at. I just lost it. 035. This is Old Business, requiring a public hearing. It's roll call, two-thirds, full council vote. Item Number 2023-035 is appropriation and loan order in the amount of $400,000 for the purpose of funding the lead service line inventory and replacement plan development. Maybe lead. Lead service line inventory, as written.
Second.
Your first and a second. And we have DBW Director Dan Santos with rationale, please.
Thank you, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. This funding request is the result of a federal requirement to develop a plan for replacement of lead service lines in the Hyannis Water System. The EPA's lead and copper rules require public water systems to develop and publish a lead service line inventory, develop a replacement plan, and an updated sampling program by October 2024. The state's Drinking Water Revolving Fund is providing 100% funding reimbursement for work of this type on a first-come-first-served basis. Consequently, we have come to you for this appropriation out of cycle rather than through the CIP program in order to position ourselves well for this potential reimbursement. In order to be an eligible drinking water SRF project and comply with the EPA's lead and copper rule, the town must first appropriate the funding for this work. And this funding will be used for the development of the inventory and plan. And while compliance with the program is required by the EPA, development of the plan will also be beneficial to the system by helping to modernize the inventorying of the water distribution network, help provide missing information and aid in replacement water service line prioritization. The Hyannis Water Board unanimously approved the funding of this work during their meeting on August 16, 2022. The funding for this appropriation is provided from the issuance of a bond for the Water Supply Enterprise Fund. Future operating budgets will include any annual loan payment as a result of the bond issue. And if the project is awarded by the SRF, there will be no financial impact to the Hyannis Water System ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. And this item is a public hearing. Is anybody for public comment, please?
There's no public comment on this item.
We will close the public hearing, please. Any council discussion? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Acelus.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Kuzak.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Ludke.
Yes.
Twelve yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the last item of old business, and now we have our first item of new business. And Council Rap Kersetti, please, if you could. Item Number 2023-041.
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business, may be acted upon, may be acted upon by roll call majority. Item 2023-041, authorization to expend a fiscal year 2023 municipal road safety grant in the amount of $65,000 in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, as read.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And Chief Sonnenbend, I know I said have a good night, but I knew as soon as I said it, I'm like, oh, wait, there's another item later on. So I'll come back. And I appreciate you not leaving. So
I almost took you up on your word. I almost left.
President Levek said go home.
He said go home. I'm done. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Chief Sonnenbend. I'm here to talk about a grant that we're receiving, the Municipal Road Safety Grant, amount of $65,000. We get this grant pretty much every year. It enables us, as you can see, to engage in five different mobilizations that the state runs throughout the year. The details of the grant are approximately $47,963.30 will be used strictly for traffic enforcement. So those activities, the winter impaired driving, distracted driving, look at our tickets, summer speed enforcement, and things like that, those monies go directly to that. What the $4,002.52 will enable us to purchase four handheld stalker radar units, so they're battery-operated radar guns that we can take out on the motorcycles, the mountain bikes, cruisers that don't have radar established in them, allows us to have some extra units to give to the officers to go out and do traffic enforcement off their shifts or on different grant activities. $3,739.60 will be allotted for pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement and education. $9,294.58 Nine thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-eight cents will be allocated for non-enforcement child uh passenger seat safety activities and training and driver education for minors using roadster pedal cart and substance consumption goggles. In other words, there's little cars that can drive around and they put goggles on. It simulates the effects of drunk driving, what it does to their vision and stuff like that. So these are the details of the grant and what it'd be using for. Uh, fiscal impact is this is a an overtime has used to conduct the mobilizations. There is no matching for this, and uh it is a reimbursement grant. So as soon as we fulfill the requirements, we submit for reimbursement at the end of each mobilization, and the state refunds us.
Okay. Very good. And there's no, it's not a public hearing, so we just go right into council discussion. Any questions, Chief Sonnenberg? All right, not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to move past eleven o'clock if needed.
Second.
First and the second. Any discussion? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Thank you, twelve yes.
Thank you. Counsel Stein Hilber, please. Item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is item twenty twenty-three dash zero four two. Authorization to expend a federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program grant in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice with eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars allocated to the town of Barnstable, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and back to you, Chief Sonnenberg for the rationale, please.
Evening once again, Chief Sonnenberg, Barnstable Police Department. As you can see, this is a federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two grant. Um, Edward Bren- Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. This is a disparate grant, and we share this with three different towns. We are the fiscal administrator for all three towns. Eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars of this grant is our share, which we plan, which we intend to use to um equip and outfit uh members of the Cape Cod Regional Law Enforcement Team that are assigned to us, the SWAT team, with different lights and equipment and training and things like that. The town of Falmouth, their share is ten thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars, which you can see they are planning to buy, purchase some stuff for their crash reconstruction um team. The town of Yarmouth, they get ten thousand forty-one dollars, which you can see they're looking to expend on some leadership training. There is no matching fund for this grant required for this grant. This is a reimbursement grant. Its expenses are incurred up to the total amount of the grant. The individual departments will submit to us, and then we will submit for reimbursement. And we take care of, we're responsible for all the grant oversight, grant reporting, reimbursement of funds, and the drawdowns. And that is basically it.
Thank you, Chief Sonnenberg. Any council discussion? Good. Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Sonnenberg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you for not calling my bluff. Yeah, have a good night.
I will this time, though.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Getting late. Uh, Counsel Star, please. Item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four three, please. Will you press on?
Thank you, President Levesque. Um, this is new business, may be acted upon with a roll call majority. It's number two zero two three oh four three. Approval of a conservation restriction between Felicia R. Penn and Jocelyn Penn Bowman as co-trustees of the Leona Penn Revocable Trust um to the Barnstable Land Trust of over one point six nine acres of land at one thirty-nine Tonella Lane in the village of Comiquid.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and I believe Janet Milkman is joining us with the rationale. Maybe not.
I don't know.
I do see her.
She is here. Um, Janet, can you unmute?
If not, does uh one of our?
I have her, I have her phone number.
I do as well.
Kate, can you jump in, if I may, Mr. President? Kate Connolly, Assistant Town Attorney.
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Janet Milkman from the Barnstable Land Trust um is prepared to answer questions about this conservation restriction, but I can basically provide information from the rationale, which is that this is a conservation restriction that the town is not a party to. In other words, we're not holding it, we're not the owner of it. But conservation restrictions have to be approved under chapter one eighty-four, sections thirty-one through thirty-three. They have to be approved by the town in which the property sits. So that's why this is before the town council for an approval, even though we're not holding it or owning it, and the BLT is going to be holding and owning it. It's a donated property by some private individuals. Felicia Penn and Jocelyn Penn Bowman as co-trustees of the Leona Penn Revocable Trust. So this is property that's on one point six nine acres of land located at one thirty-nine Tonella Lane in Comiquid. And it's shown on a Sessors map, three thirty-six parcel twenty-three. This is a property that has been donated for a conservation restriction, which will be held by the Barnstable Land Trust. And it looks like possibly Janet has uploaded a description of the property. If Janet is available and ready to talk further, she can describe what this property um has in terms of conservation amenities and the details that are going to be on the restriction. But that's essentially why it's before the town council is the town council has to approve or disapprove, but typically approve any property that's been proposed for a conservation restriction within its bounds, even if it's not going to be an owner or a holder of the restriction.
So with that, uh, thank you for that, for filling in on the rationale there, um, Attorney Connolly. Uh, do, is Ms. Milkman available by any chance? I do see her could still.
Um, uh, Counsel Clark texted me and said that she is having trouble on muting or showing her video. I did suggest that she log off and log back in. Um, other than that, I'm not sure how to fix it, so.
Okay. Counsel Star.
Um, thank you. I had a, I had a question for Kate. Maybe Kate can answer. Um, I wasn't aware until I read this that there's public access will be granted on this CR.
That's, again, that's probably a detail that's better answered by Janet, but I I do think public access for passive recreation was the contemplation for this particular CR.
Okay.
We have Janet. She's here on her phone.
There you are.
Okay, we got you.
We see you, but can we hear you?
I'm so sorry.
There you are.
Believe it or not, I've been on since seven, so.
I bet you have. I know you have. I saw you on the the second page. I clicked over there. I said, sorry, you're still there. So anyhow, welcome.
Anyway, good evening, and I apologize. Um, and I understand that um Kate Connolly read the rationale, um, and you saw where the property is. It's um and and again, it's a conservation restriction that's being donated by the Penn family. They they will continue to own the land, but it will be um kept as open space. Basically, the development rights are extinguished. They are benefiting from a state tax credit, um, which um we uh got them in line for in twenty nineteen, and they're now up and um up for it, so we're gonna close this year. Um, it is uh right um in the corridor between uh a big open space parcel protected by Mass Audubon at Long Pasture Sanctuary and to the west of that, um, the Brazelton property that we have been working on, um, conserving with the family for about thirty years now, and we'll actually come back to you next month with another piece to add to that. So um, we are required as a nonprofit to get town council approval to hold any conservation restrictions, and it's consistent with the open space policy, the open space plan. It's been approved by both the Land Acquisition and Protection Committee and um also the Conservation Commission.
Any questions for Ms. Milkman? All right, not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Shaughnessy, eleventh hour.
All I wanted to relay to Janet was please thank the Penn family on behalf of the residents of the town for preserving this property as open space.
Will do.
Thank you, Counsel Shaughnessy. And with that, move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mendez, please, if you could. Next item of new business, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four four.
Pleasure. Period. We went.
Thank you.
Brief presentation.
The President.
I assumed it was something technical, exclamation point.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, read that.
Yeah, this is item twenty twenty twenty-three dash zero four four. This is new business. A resolution that the town council petitioned the county commissioner of Barnstable County to formally discontinue five, five sections of county highway, namely the entire length of Scudder Avenue, which combined extend from Park Place to the West End Rotary. May be acted upon, roll call majority.
Second.
Second, and we have Attorney McLaughlin for the rationale, please.
Uh, thank you, President Levesque. Um, this and the next item are uh at zero four five uh are and I, part of an ongoing uh interaction with the county to uh identify roads that uh earlier in the, in the last century, an awful lot of this action taking place in the nineteen twenties and nineteen thirties whereby the, whereby the county acquired uh easements over various roads to maintain them and so forth. Uh, the county's obviously been out of business on that for a number of years now, and for generations, actually. And the town, excuse me, the town has uh been uh actively maintaining these and repairing them and and uh tending to all the things that one would do as as the controlling authority. Uh, these five sections of uh Scudder Ave uh are described uh in more detail by reference to the book and page of the county takings and so forth. I won't repeat all those numbers because they're not particularly helpful. Critical to this uh vote uh and uh the vote that you'll next consider is on zero four five is that it is the intent uh to render the sections of the county highway described in the item uh by operation of law of the chapter eighty-two, section five, uh and that the petition request that the county discontinue those sections of the county highway, but that they remain a public way and that the town manager be authorized to execute and deliver any documents on behalf of the town necessary to effectuate this resolve. I mentioned this last point because the statute, i- if one, uh, if the town does not petition to have it remain a public way, uh, it uh devolves back to its prior ownership status and uh um, it it's obviously not our intent to uh to have that happen. In fact, the uh, the roadways, and I'll discuss it in a little bit more detail in zero four five, eh, this is offered in support of uh work necessary, uh, both for sewer purposes and other purposes, including a project that uh EverSource is going to be undertaking to replace a major uh transformer down by Crankville Beach. So important work here. In order for us to grant uh N-Star or EverSource the opportunity to get in there, uh, they, we need to own the road and and remove it from the county. So we'll coordinate this thoroughly with the county, but the the broad picture is this is in support of the sewer layouts and some other uses that we're concerned about. Happy to uh move on if you wish to zero four five, or we can take a vote on this one. It might be cleaner to take a vote on this and then move on to the next one.
Yeah, if there's any council discussion. Any council discussion? Counsel Ludkey, please.
Yeah, my only question, and thank you, is that uh how many of these of of these other roads are like this? Are we just doing these two because for the sewer project, or are we gonna do them piece by?
Uh, I, I'm glad you asked that question, Counselor. Um, this is part of an ongoing program uh that we have identified. We've done a number of roads already, including the uh Finneys from uh twenty-eight up to one thirty-two and so forth, as described by uh Dan Santos earlier. But uh we've identified a number of other roads, and so we're going to be coming back, particularly for phase one of the uh of the sewer layout. Uh, we'll be coming back to you with uh in two or three more sessions in sequence, uh requesting for the discontinuance or for the resolutions to petition the county discontinue other roads. And as, there's a fair amount of work, particularly from engineering and survey standpoint, to uh get these ready for you, and we're also sensitive to the amount of time that these this will take. So we're going to do it in sequence, and we'll tie that sequence to when DPW needs the, these voted upon, so that we can gain control, and then when the time comes, certify titles of the state for SRF funding, so it was. It's a long answer. Short question, we're, we're going to work with you closely, but uh you'll be seeing a a whole series of these roads coming before you for a petition to the county over the next couple of months. Won't necessarily be all in town. We're going to continue that work once we get through this, for this first phase of the sewer in this coming year or so. Uh, once we're past that, we'll, we'll move on to other projects with a little longer uh timeframe out there.
Any other council discussion? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counseler Atsles, please, if you could. Item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four five.
Nick, you're muted.
I am muted. This is an item of new business, may be acted upon by roll call majority. Item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four five. A resolution of the town council petition the county commissioners of
A resolution of the town council petition the county commissioners of Barnstable County to formally discontinue three sections of county highway, namely, the entire length of Craigville Beach Road, which combined extend from Scudder Avenue to South Main Street, and also includes Smith Street, formerly a portion of Craigville Beach Road, as written.
Second.
We have first and a second, back to you, Attorney McGlaughlin for the rationale, please.
Thank you again, five sections of this road taken over a period of time from roughly 1927 on, and in combination, what we're asking is to have a petition go forward with the commissioners to abandon this entire section of roadway. Importantly, just as the, the northern end of this, near Smith Street, actually was part of the roadway at the time, and that's one section was subsequently renamed Smith Street, but it's part of the original layout of Craigville Beach Road. I also offer, for the record, the same comment I had just a moment ago, that it's the intent under chapter 82, section 5, to maintain this as a public way, and we ask that the petition, that the county in discontinuing that, recognize that the town will continue to keep this as a public way and authorizing the town manager to execute all documents necessary. Thank you.
You. Any council discussion? Obviously, really similar item to the last item. Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Axless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Kuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stein Hilber, please, last item of new business, item number 2023-046.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to refer item 2023-046 to a second read on November 3rd, 2022. Authorization of Housing Development Incentive Program Tax Increment Exemption Agreement between the town of Barnstable and Sea Shore Homes, Inc. For eight new market rate residential units located at 63 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass., as written.
Second.
We have first and a second, it's the first read, move to a vote, please.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just make note for the clerk that the sponsor should say the town council tax increment committee, not tax incentive committee.
Says that. Tax underwriting.
Thanks for picking that up.
No, you got it, no, you're right, you got it.
Yep.
Got it, got it.
Okay. Let's move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Kuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axless.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. That is the last item of business on this agenda today, it's a very good work, everybody. Lots of great information, thank you, staff. For all your hard work, going moving into this, this agenda, so got a lot done, thank you, Tom Andrew Hills, and I would, at this point, entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Wasn't sure someone was going to second, but with that, move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Kuzak.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Ludkey.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axless.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night.